Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Maryville Town Council meeting for today, Tuesday, May 14th at 6:30 PM. Please stand for our pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for our invocation.
Let's pray. Oh God, our Father, we thank you for the privilege of being able to meet tonight. Father, as always, we continue to pray your blessings upon the men and women in this room as they think, as they plan, as they vision, Father, for what this community can yet become because of your grace and mercy. We thank you for your protection, for your care upon every aspect of this community. So, Father, again, we come to you tonight to say thank you in seeking more of your wisdom and guidance, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Mr. January, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Vice President Neal.
Here.
Councilwoman Haines Edwards.
Present.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Present.
Councilwoman Yuzlak.
Here.
Councilman Pettit.
Here.
Councilwoman Hardaway.
Present.
President Bella.
Here.
Seventh president.
Thank you, Eric.
You're welcome, sir.
We have no petitions, communications, or acknowledgements this evening. Joe, are there any public hearings tonight? I don't see any listed.
Mr. Town Manager, there are none scheduled correct.
It is correct.
Thank you. Moving on tonight to the consent agenda, we have the accounts payable register voucher approval for May 14th, the AP register summary for ARP purchases for May 14th, the approval of the town council meeting minutes of April 23rd, the approval of the ARP A committee meeting minutes, the approval of the council workshop minutes of April 17th, the gifted usage of Mike Anderson Event Center for funeral services, memorandum asking for a waiver of charges for use of facilities at the MVSC, and a memorandum request for special rates and users' charges for Brazilian youth soccer camps. I do want to make a notation that you had another voucher at your place setting tonight on page three, claim vendor number, sorry, 591. There was a change in the amount, and Mr. January provided this updated list. Is that correct, Eric?
Correct. The amount was reduced from $1,900 to $950, which is the monthly rent for the police station in the north side of town.
Thank you, sir.
So moved.
Thank you, March. Motion by Mrs. Yuzlak for approval. Second by Mrs. Chandler Felton. Questions or comments?
I had one question, and that is in regards to the consent agenda. The gifted use of the Mike Anderson Centers for funeral services, is that for everyone in the town, or how is that?
It was for one event.
One event, okay, all right. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, and motion carries. Moving on tonight to standing, committee reports, budget and finance, Mrs. Neal.
The report.
Council affairs, Mr. Pettit.
Yes, Mr. President. We had a council affairs committee meeting last week. We went through several ordinances with Joe and Ricardo and Michael, which will appear later on under first readings.
Thank you. Street department, Mrs. Yuzlak.
Yes, I have called Steve King yesterday. There's a field behind 77th and Hendrix, and he had it cleaned up, Johnny on the spot. And they called me today, and they thanked me. And I think you're still picking up branches, correct?
Yep.
Okay, and one more thing, I'm trying to think, what was it? It'll come to me, I'll talk to you later.
I'm here.
Oh, the tanks, did anybody get ahold of you for the underground tanks?
Yeah, so what we did is we sent a quote to the ARP committee, it's like $47,000. We sent the quotes to the ARP committee. Hopefully, they'll approve that. Both tanks at our facility have been emptied, they're ready to come out of the ground. Northern Mechanical is going to be the contractor, so we're just waiting on the ARP committee to approve that so we can get the tanks removed.
Okay, thank you, Steve.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Moving on to elections, public relations, and town beautification, Mrs. Neal.
Thank you, President Bella. We have been meeting every two weeks. We have a list of just beautification events, and that is covering all of the town entryway, gateway signs that we are redoing and looking to put our new slogan and everything on. So our next meeting is Monday, May 20th, so we meet every two weeks so we can diligently keep the process moving. And Mr. King, if you don't mind giving us an update on our flowers and everything, plants, and I see some things up and growing.
So we have been planting, the planters on 93rd Avenue, we had, we had just planted one a couple of weeks ago, and it got, the planter got destroyed by a car, it's since been repaired. We'll continue planting probably until the end of next week. We should be done then. The planters here at Town Hall have been painted and planted, we still have more things to go in. Hanging baskets are scheduled to be delivered more towards the end of May, I thought it'd be this week, but Zansters won't release them till more towards the end of May. They'll be going here and at the community center. The new planters for the community center were delivered, we put stone in there, we're going to get dirt in there, and they should be, hopefully by the end of this week, they should be filled, but they turned out really, they look really nice, so I can't wait to see the flowers in there.
Great.
But the crews have really, they've really outdone themselves. If you take a ride down 93rd and see what they've done, and even here at Town Hall and at the center, it looks really good.
Yes. Thank you, I saw you guys out on 93rd the other morning, it was early too, I was really impressed. Very good, thank you. That's it for us.
Thank you.
Mr. Bella.
Environmental affairs, Mr. Pettit.
No report.
Personnel and employee benefits, Mrs. Hardaway.
Mr. President, we are still exercising our plan with the community center going forward with the hiring service for a director temporarily, and we do have some open positions coming available, so we will be calling an executive session for our personnel and policy and employee benefits committee to discuss those open positions. That is all for that report.
Okay. Why don't you continue on with your public safety report?
Okay, public safety, lot of stuff is going on. I will address more on my fire and protection and territory board report as far as the police department will be calling a public safety committee meeting, executive session for that as well. That is all, President Bella.
Thank you. Economic development, Mr. Pettit.
No report.
Parks and recreations, Mrs. Yuzlak.
Well, the park department will have to get out there and start mowing, the rain has really grown the grass. So, that's about all I have to report on that today. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mrs. Yuzlak. Utility liaison, Mrs. Leona Chandler Felton.
No report at this time, President.
Moving on to special committees, abandoned blighted properties, Mrs. Haines Edwards.
Thank you, President Bella. Sean, would you elaborate on what we just talked about in the redevelopment?
Oh, yes, yes, thank you. As the abandoned blighted properties meets every third Friday of the month, and 6935 Broadway was taken care of by the redevelopment commission, the demolition costs are going to be absorbed by the Broadway allocation area. Mr. King and Ms. Shine put out the notices along with Ricardo Hall from Joe's office. We went in front of Judge Gekas, and he ordered a demolition, given proper notice and posting, which has been done. Steve and Sheila obtained two quotes. We went with the lower of the quote, which was C. Lee for $32,400 with the caveat that if there's additional cost on the basement removal, which was ordered by Judge Gekas, we will look at a change order, Joe and Steve will coordinate that change order. So, I've given them, as President of RDC, give Steve a verbal to contact C. Lee and get that on the schedule as soon as possible, once utilities are disconnected.
Thank you. And also, our town manager, Mr. Griffin, has said that he would arrange to work with myself and senior code enforcement officer to go ahead and get those sites that have been the most problematic for the town to get it going properly. That is all for abandoned.
Thank you. Semi-quintcentennial committee?
Nothing to report.
Special town projects, Mrs. Neal.
Thank you, President Bella. We have several projects, events that are going on with the town. The first I'm going to talk about is going to be Juneteenth, which is going to be held at the Barbara and the Dean and Barbara Community Center. Their mission is free, the event starts at 5:00 PM. The town will be showing two movies, and the theme for the Juneteenth is going to honor Afro-American excellence in cinema. The two movies are going to be Hidden Figures and Princess and the Frog. In addition, there will be local vendors and food trucks, and a children's play area will also be available, and that's on June 18th for Juneteenth. The second is going to be our July 3rd fireworks, starting at dusk, that's going to be at the Maryville High School on July the 4th, July 3rd. July 4th, we are going to have our annual parade, we're still looking for businesses and organizations that are interested in participating. The parade will start at 11:00 AM at the community center and head south to Eightieth Place. It is free to participate in the parade, we are currently at about 17 entries within the parade minus our council that's going to participate in the parade also. And the information can be found on our website, or you can just contact the town. If you're interested in being in the parade, you can contact Linda Rosa, or you can go to the Town Events 2024 at maryville.in.gov. The fourth, I'm going to talk about is going to be our job fair. The job fair is going to be held on July the 24th. We are, had a great success with the last year, and we're looking forward to turn out to be an excellent success, excuse me, success again this year. It's going to be at the community center, the first 150 attendees will also receive a lunch ticket, which they can purchase their lunch at the food trucks that will be on site, just to name a few organizations or companies that will be out there seeking employment. Web Hyundai, Staff Source, we have Maryville PD, Horseshoe Casino, Horizon and Centaur Bank, or just to name a few. If anyone is still interested in wanting to participate as far as being an employer there, they can also contact the town at Town Events 2024 at maryville.in.gov. And that's going to conclude all of the upcoming town events.
Sounds like a lot, thank you.
Mr. President, to Councilor Neal, and actually to Chaz, is all the artwork for these events been prepared, Rhonda?
Uh...
Chaz, can you get me the electronic stuff for the billboards, including the job fair? Okay.
All right. That's all, President Bella.
The Dean and Barbara White Community Center, Mr. Pettit.
Okay, first and foremost, I've decided as chairman to set the monthly meeting for the Fourth Thursday, go back to the Fourth Thursday at 5:00, like we had in the past, with the standing, standing meeting inside the Mike Anderson Event Center at the community center, Michael. I think Linda is taking care of that. I want to thank Michael for working diligently on some items up there, he's been up there, what, three days a week, two days a week?
Before I had pneumonia, Mr. ...
Yes. Today, we've had the long-awaited NIPSCO energy audit of the facility. Obviously, the gymnasium portion, the three basketball courts are eating us up with the NIPSCO bills, so we're going to be addressing that at our next committee meeting. The lease for the Boys and Girls Club, I believe, is being reviewed, the current one, Joe? I know the lease payments have been made, right, Eric?
We're awaiting the sample lease.
We're awaiting sample lease, but the lease, the lease payments for the two years have been made.
Correct.
We have our money.
We're up to date.
Okay, we're up to date on that, okay, good. I know there's some upcoming events that Barbara's got planned, Councilor Neal has got one out there that I think is exciting. I'm hope, are all three boys coming to the football camp?
Yes, they will all be here.
All right, we've got the football camp, we've got two other items, Michael, refresh my memory, that have been approved out there.
IUN Soccer, it's in my report, they're going to have their practices there. And because of your action tonight, we may have Brazilian soccer as a result of that.
Okay, all right.
Are those the two you met?
Yes, those are the two I met. Obviously, we have both capital issues, ladies, for the committee on the 23rd, as well as operational. Council Hardaway mentioned the staffing, the director position, the management. We have, I have your list, President Bella, of some items that we're going to, I'll share with Michael, and we'll address at the committee level, as you did a walkthrough there. I think that's about it for now, covers most of it, so. Michael, am I leading anything off?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, that is all.
Thank you. Moving on to...
President Bella, I do have a comment.
January.
In regards to the lease to the Barbara White Center, most of the leases that I've been engaged with are normally drawn by the lessor, the leasee, and not the lessor. And it seems like we're letting them take the lead on it.
No, 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 no. The lease that's currently in play was drafted in coordination with the Boys and Girls Club.
Correct.
So, we are just having them update and drop in dates into the new lease.
Right.
So this has been a lease that's been agreed upon for years.
Okay, all right, it made it sound like it was getting revamped completely, right.
Department and Commission reports, Lake County Solid Waste Management District, Mrs. Neal.
Thank you, President Bella. The next meeting with the Lake County Solid Waste Management District is going to be May the 16th, but just to give you a few updates of what they're doing, they still do have the certified composite that is available for pickup, you just have to give them a phone call, if you go to their website, they have all the information. It's a half a cubic yard per household that's free to all of Lake County residents, you will have to show proof of residency just by using your driver's license. The phone number is 219-337-8341. You have to give them a call because they're not there waiting, but if you call them, let them know a date and time, and they'll be available for you to pick that up. The Household Hazardous Waste Collection is May 18th at Hobart Public Works, and that's at 34 South Shelby from 9:00 to 2:00 PM. Something that's very interesting, which is new for me, may not be new for others, all of the programs that they do have, so if you have youth that are looking for additional summer programs that they can participate in free, if you go to their website, they have free registration, they run from June and July. The programs are up to seventh grade, starting from first grade, some of them, it varies, but they do go up to seventh grade, and parents can go and do a couple of fun things. One of the fun things that I saw on here that I thought was pretty interesting was that they were going to make edible landfill. So, they just do a lot of fun projects with the kids throughout the summer, so that's something, if residents have children, they're looking for additional things to do, that's a great opportunity to take advantage of.
What is edible landfill?
You know, that's really interesting, I'm glad you asked. So, just reading about it, it said, "Learn about important design and construction of landfill by making your own edible version. Discover how to reduce your waste production while snacking on tasty layers of your creation."
Okay.
So maybe they'll make dirt and worms.
Out of Oreos.
Crossed Oreos.
Of course, yes, yes.
Albanese worms.
Yes.
Yeah.
But it sounds really interesting, something I think I'll take my grandchildren to. But that's all.
Looking forward to seeing that.
Yes.
Northern Indiana Regional Planning Commission, Ms. Hardaway.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, the meeting was April 18th, I attended the commission meeting. There was a discussion, there was a group that came from the Northwest Indiana Food Council, and they talked about community gardens, and they needed locations. They serve the following counties, Lake Porter, LaPorte, Newton, Jasper, Stark, and Pulaski. Maryville schools do participate in the farm-to-school program that they have. There is a website, Northwest Indiana, or NWIFoodCouncil.org, if there are locations around the area in which they can create a community garden, because they would like to have more sustainable food sources for people. So that is my, oh, they also discussed railroads, and it was, not a railroad, we have CN come through, but they are talking about in discussion with the quiet zones that people want in their areas, so they had a representative there, but it was not from CN. That concludes my report for...
Thank you. Fire Territory Board, Mrs. Neal and Ms. Hardaway.
Well, since the chief is here, I will...
Chief Yerga, sure.
Fire Chief Yerga is here, we did have a territory board meeting yesterday, correct, yesterday. So there are a lot of projects in the works, and since he is here, I will let him discuss those.
All right, I can do that. First off, the Fire Territory at last night's meeting entered into a contract with American Structure Point and Core Construction for the design, final design and construction management of the North Fire Station remodel project and the new storage, maintenance, and firefighter wellness building behind station, the station on 73rd Avenue, so that's moving along nicely. We did, we touched a little bit on our $5.5 million bond that's in the process now. We're going to have a meeting, I believe it's June 11th, that's moving the process forward, so you guys should be seeing some stuff come across the council here pretty quickly with that. They're talking about getting us funded by mid-September. We have our drone program that's off the ground, we've actually had it for quite some time, we've been using it, but most recently, most of our firefighters are now trained and are certified pilots, or they will be soon certified pilots. And this drone is similar to PG's drone, it's got thermal imaging and all that good stuff, and 200 times zoom, all that good stuff. I really didn't think it would be applicable so much on the fire ground, because I'm pretty old school, but at our last apartment fire, a large apartment fire we had, and having the aerial, the view from the top and seeing what was going on, it was pretty, it was very helpful, and it's going to be a valuable tool moving forward, so it was worth $30,000 plus that we spent, the Fire Territory spent on it. Our dive team, if some of you might not know, but we do have a dive team here in Maryville, consisting of about seven of our firefighters. Currently, this week, they're at a dive week training, it's a five-day training, they traveled at the Kankakee River, which now is pretty much at flood stage, so that should be pretty entertaining for them. They were at Frencher Lake today, they go to Kankakee, Illinois, to do a deep 100-foot dive in Hague Quarry, and that's in conjunction with the Crown Point Fire Department and the Hobart Fire Department. So they're, I can't say enough about those guys, they're very dedicated, they take it very seriously, and they, they do train and do everything to the T. Going back to our firefighter wellness and the storage and maintenance building, on that piece of property behind Station 71 on 73rd Avenue, we are going to be installing a firefighter memorial, since we do not have a firefighter memorial in town, so we will be starting a program, looking for donations, and we're going to sell bricks similar to the veterans memorial on 73rd Avenue. So we're going to incorporate the basic footprint, though, in our, in our design. Our smoke detector program is, ever since we talked about it here, it's gone off the charge, off the charts. Our firefighters are daily, daily installing fire, or smoke detectors and carbon monoxide detectors for the people that one can't afford them, or the elderly who can't, don't have the means to install them. So that, that program is like tripled since we talked about that last, but that's, that's pretty encouraging. And the last thing I want to talk about, and if I, Mr. President, if it's okay when I get done with this last topic, if I invite Captain Westbury to the podium to talk about a future event we're going to have here shortly?
Sure.
Okay. Last thing I want to talk about is the firefighters in Maryville, they officially unionized, so we've joined the International Association of Firefighters and the Professional Firefighters Union of Indiana, so from now, they're waiting on the charter to get through, when the charter gets finalized, I would like to come in front of the town council, and we can do a formal introduction to all, all the leadership and everything like that, if that's okay? And they will be known as the Maryville Professional Firefighters Local 5489. So that's been coming for a while, and it's, it's a very positive thing for us. And with that, if Captain Westbury would come up?
Chief, he can walk up, but I have to ask you about something. The memorial, the location of memorial, it might be a little hidden where you're talking about it, and actually, we talked about this about four years ago, Captain Westbury and I, about doing something where the Old Mill Pizzeria came down on 73rd and Maryville Road.
I would, I would love to do that, that'd be fantastic.
So the town owns that property, if that would be a better location for what you're talking about, I'm sure the town will be very open to, you know, deeding over that property to the fire department. So just think about that in your planning favor.
That's definitely a conversation, we'd have to get some corporate sponsors to help us with that, though, that'd be great. Sean?
We can, I have an uncle, his name is Sean, and I call him all the time.
Yeah.
That Broadway money tree is getting a little thin in the back of this town hall, guys.
He always says that. But something to think about, because you and I talked about that...
Yes.
...years ago, and I just think it's a more high visible corner.
Definitely, I mean, if that's something that we want to do, again, we could sit down like we did a couple of years ago and...
Okay.
...talk about it, I'll see if I can track down all of my paperwork and stuff that I have from back then, it's, so. Just real quick, I wanted to come up here and invite everybody in the room, all the council members, everybody else. Monday, May 27th, as you know, is Memorial Day, and for as long as I've been a fireman, and it's a couple summers, 27 of them, but we've always done a silent parade for the veterans. So basically, what we're going to do is we're going to leave the old town hall, the Maryville Museum, at 9:00 AM, and we are going to have a silent parade led by our honor, by our honor guard, and we're going to walk down 73rd to the veterans' memorial and the cemetery there. We will be placing a wreath and having a very quick memorial there. Once that's all said and done, we're going to return back to the Fire Station on 73rd, where we do a police and fire memorial, we'll read off all the names of all the police officers, all the firefighters in this town that have passed away. We do something a little nice for the family afterwards. We will be providing lunch, just simple hamburgers and hot dogs, but at the same time, we're also going to have our brand new Edith House out there. It's not quite ready, but it's ready enough to take a look at. We can also put up the drone, we've got a few other cool things that are going to be coming out that same day, so, Monday, May 27th. Anybody that wants to walk, council members, it'd be great to have you guys out there, just meet us at the town museum before 9:00 AM, and we'll all walk down 73rd and show our support for all the veterans.
Appreciate it.
Mr. President, I've got to ask Chief Yerga and, and Mr. Westbury, are those the brand-new radios?
Yeah, the $15,000 thing hanging off my side here.
Okay. They look good.
Are they working well?
Pardon me?
Are they working, that's the main thing.
Yeah, they're pretty, they're pretty advanced.
Okay.
I'll tell Crowe Holdings, she said thank you.
Yeah, there you go.
Anything else, Chief?
No, I'm good, thank you.
All right, thank you.
That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Well, thank you. Moving on tonight to department reports, Police Department, Chief Newses.
Thank you, Mr. President. Give you a brief rundown of the unofficial numbers for April. We had approximately 2,300 calls for service, out of those 2,300 calls for service resulted in 75 arrests, officers made a total of 525 traffic stops, and as of right now, it's looking like there is 275 tickets that were issued. The weather is getting warmer, so logic is starting to go out the window for a lot of people. The pursuits have already started, where they are just fleeing from our traffic stops, they refuse to stop for the police. There is something that we are working with, I'm working with attorneys Fettinoff on in regards to an ordinance that we can add, that, toll ordinance, Joe? That's going to be something that we're looking at trying to add, so, add more repercussions to these people that are trying to flee in case they try to get their car, because right now, it's only a hundred dollar fine. So, we want to pick that up. One of these I wanted to report on, on April 30th, the Joint Task Force from Lake County ended up doing a raid on a house in the 7,000 block of Polk Street, so this is already something that has benefited... So this is already something that has benefited us, and we are, I'm glad that we ended up joining and being part of it. So there's going to be more to come on some of these. Back up to the 26th of April, we had an incident in the 200 block of East 58th where there was a shooting. We were able to get out there, lock everything down, and we really got a chance to use our drones. Our drone actually opened our eyes to how we can utilize it and kind of touch what Ed was talking about. It really makes a big difference. It gives you a significant advantage, because you're able to see from the top, you're able to have people in your command center, you're able to coordinate everybody properly. So this is something that we're really excited about to keep continuing doing. And needless to say, all suspects involved, or I would rather say, all people of interest were taken into custody that day fairly quickly. And to piggyback on the drone program, tomorrow, May 15th, or, May 15th, at Salk Elementary School, there's going to be some police presence there. They've been courteous enough to let us use the school to do some drone training and Pharaoh training. So the Pharaoh system is a new state-of-the-art system that we have purchased, that we were granted through the ARP money in conjunction with the drones. And what it does is, it actually helps you recreate a 3D image of an accident scene or a crime scene. So it's really good, and you can use it to work with the drones as well. So they're going to be doing that. So I just want everybody to know, don't get, don't get worried, there's nothing going on at the school, it's just our officers doing some training. Lastly, I want to add that our four additional officers just graduated the academy, so they're going to be starting on their next phase, which is going to be field training. They're going to be assigned to field training officers, who are going to train them how to be the police. And we're expecting them to be out on the road sometime end of September. So thank you for the additional four officers, it's going to make a difference, and we are looking at implementing a traffic unit beginning the first of the year of next year with these extra officers. That's all I have.
Very good, thank you, Chief. Planning and building, Ms. Schein.
Mr. President, I just have one report. The architect who was working on the Meadowdale plans was in the office today. There was some structural damage there, so once he get the plans in, I'll send them to, to you, Chief Yerga, because there was some structural damage, and they want to do the repair in two parts, first structure and then the other repair. The residents down there were getting a little anxious, and I was so glad that the man came in to start that progress, to repair that building.
Great.
That's it, Mr. President.
Thank you. Engineering and Street Department, Mr. King.
Okay, so we've been really busy. We've got a, our branch shipper crew is, is out. They've been going through town continuously and, and will so till probably the end of September, and then we'll switch over to our winter operations. We've been mowing town properties as we can, weather permitting. Councilwoman Usek had mentioned one earlier off of 78th and Hendricks. That was actually the Parks Department. I got ahold of Mr. Mike Neal, talked to him about it yesterday. It was too wet for them to get back in there, I guess they went back there and it dried out, so they were able to get that mowed, but the Parks Department needs to get the credit for that. Planting, I've already said, we've been planting all over the place, and hopefully, you know, in the next few weeks here, we'll be done. We've had our street sweepers out, we got two street sweepers. They've been out running through the town as, as we can, cleaning up some of the, the winter grime. So we got that. The, the fuel tanks, the fuel tanks are empty at the facility, at our facility. Our diesel tank is falling apart from the inside, and it's got to be removed. Both tanks are going to be removed. We went to the WEX fleet card system for fuel. I know police uses it, fire uses it, and we use it as well. Also, we've lost our, our backup generator has failed in our shop down at our department, so I submitted quotes for that, also to the ARP committee requesting some funds so we can get our, our backup generator replaced. Community crossings project, 61st Avenue, started Monday, doing concrete restoration work and resurfacing. It's going to be a six-week project, so as anybody's traveling through the area, you know, please be patient. There's some congestion, some, some traffic hazards out there, so just be patient while they get that done. And last but not least, speed humps. The speed humps have been delivered. We've actually installed some out in the Foxmore subdivision. I know I got an email from, from Councilwoman Neal the other day. One set of those has gone in, and hopefully the other set will go in tomorrow. 71st and Whitcomb's gone in, the one down at 68, they haven't gone in yet. So I'm just looking for, as, as you hear of the problem areas, please let me know, and we'll get those installed as, as quickly as we can. So we're, we're working, we're busy.
Thank you, Mr. King.
You're welcome.
Steve, could I call you tomorrow?
Call me anytime.
Regarding the speed bumps.
You call me anytime.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I do want to announce that on the next agenda, it will no longer read interim town manager. It's just going to read town manager. And I'll call on you now, Michael, for your report.
Thank you, Mr. President, I appreciate that. Mr. President, Madam Vice President, Mr. Clerk Treasurer, members of the council, you have before you, I have issued both my delayed monthly report that is a culmination of the staff reports required under our ordinance that all the department heads contribute to, and then you have my fresh report that gives you a little bit of the activity that I've been involved in as town manager, that I instituted to be in addition to that other report. It is before you. I could summarize it for you, but it's readable if you have a question for me. I do want to call your attention to two things from that report with your leave. Panorama Magazine, through the work of our event manager, Ms. Young, we got promoted on the cover. This gets distributed throughout the community, and there's a nice little story in there, but I love the picture of this, the center, and it's another way to get people interested in renting there, which we're eager to have them do. And I do want to explain, Mr. Lake is away this evening with permission. He's attending a stormwater conference where he goes with colleagues and learns more about it, although as good as he is at it, I'm sure he's teaching some as well, but we're grateful that he's here for continuing education. All of you should have received in your Friday packets, Mr. President, a green little booklet that is called An Elected Official's Guide to Government Finance. I've maintained my membership as a member of the Government Finance Officers Association. I'm going to encourage our Clerk Treasurer to join that as well. He's as committed to being a professional in that role as I know I am. And I think it's very readable. It's a very easy booklet for you, it's a gift for me, I get a discount by being a member, and I hope that you enjoy it. It's kind of instructive. And at the same time I ordered that, I actually ordered a gift for our Clerk Treasurer that will be more up to his liking about revenue forecasting and budgeting best practices that I'll also give to him and our fiscal analyst. Apart from that, Mr. President, members of the council, I'm open any questions you may have for me.
Questions for Mr. Griffin. Thank you, Michael.
Aye, thank you.
Moving on tonight to general orders, first reading ordinances. Mr. January.
Before we move on, I just wanted to add a couple things, just in regards to the Treasurer's office. We just recently had some good news. We got our second check for $69,000 from the food and beverage tax, and we had 29 additional people that actually, organizations that actually paid into the food and beverage tax. So we're still far below where we're supposed to be, but it's moving in the right direction. In regards to the internal controls within the office, I really thank God for the staff that we have, because there was just a check that somebody tried to cash for $22,000. So one of the things that I want to do, and I mentioned it to the staff today, because it's really prevalent, particularly in Chicago with home healthcare businesses and stuff like that, there's a lot of check fraud going on. And I want to try to move the town more towards direct deposit, so that the few people that resist it, just in terms of their payroll checks and the vendors, I want to just try to get everybody to direct deposit, because that eliminates the risk of somebody possibly stealing some money from the town that we can't afford to lose. And we are looking, looking forward to some tax receipts, because most of us that own homes in the town of Maryville, we just paid our taxes. So the town should be pretty flush with some cash. But I just really wanted to add those few things, the food and beverage tax, we just got the check today.
Very good.
Right.
Good. Now, what do we do about the restaurants that are not charging food and beverage? Some of them are not charging it.
Correct. We, we really have to work with the Department of Revenue, because the information they provide me is privileged. So they don't want us to go up to the restaurants that are not collecting and say, hey, we know you're not enrolled.
Right.
They want to handle that. So we have to work with them in order to get more people in compliance, but we definitely need to accelerate the pace of the collection, because when they do pay, you'll notice that we get penalties and interest for people not paying on time. And I do know a few people, probably just as you do,
Yes.
that our, our restaurants that are operating, and they're not just collecting the tax. So I, I equated that to an analogy like Maryville being the Wild West. People, some people just want to resist law and order. They want, don't want to change their license plates over from Illinois, and they don't want to pay the food and beverage tax, so.
Well, the problem is, for the restaurants, is the Indiana Department of Revenue has the ability to claw back that money.
Correct.
So if they don't collect it first quarter, and they claw, claw it back, it's going to be a significant hit to their bottom line.
Oh, it adds up, because they, if they don't collect the tax, ultimately, they're responsible for the tax, so they can end up having to come out of their pocket, and that's reducing their bottom line by 1%.
Plus fines and penalties.
Correct. Right.
Mr. President, with your lead.
President Bella.
I beg your pardon, Mr. Clerk. I'm just going to echo and amplify everything that the venerable Clerk Treasurer shared with the council. I did say you could read this on your own, but I call your attention to the first paragraph of my report to you. We, we are forming a task force. The Clerk Treasurer's office has been extremely cooperative about giving us that information as quickly as they get it with regard to the revenues. We know that only 11% of the tax base complied in our first distribution. We have a contact with the Indiana Department of Revenue. Everything that he said about that, and our town attorney said about that, is all true. But they're actually asking us to give more meaningful notice, because they're concerned about, there is an element of due process and taxation that requires us to make sure everybody was aware, even though we follow the process according to the statute. I formed a sort of an ad hoc group. They're reporting back, we're going to do a social media run. We've got a new database of over 3,000 that are just for businesses, which we're going to actually turn over to you, Mr. Clerk Treasurer, because we think that'll be a great database for us to be able to get and expand our business license information. But from that, we're going to try to glean it down to just those people that we think are affected by the food and beverage taxes. That would not be the entire business tax base. Once that mailing is done and the promotion is done, we expect that the food, the Indiana Department of Revenue will then start reminding all of them to do that and everything that was said. They're going to be responsible for it no matter what, there could be a clawback, and they have some discretion about the penalties, but they don't have it in terms of all of it. So our hope is that we can encourage people to participate, just remind them, the collectors, and I'm looking forward to it. We also have these little bookmarks that we're going to try to give out to everyone. So when you go to a business in Maryville that you know is covered by it, I like to go to the McDonald's to see if they're collecting it, for example, you can give them the bookmark. It gives them all the information they need, a QR code to go to if they need it. So we, we hear everything that's being said, we're going to take our steps to do one more time to make meaningful notice to the people who are covered by it, and our hope after that event that we'll get compliance way up, and there'll be very little enforcement that will require at the DOR. I thank the council for permission to speak.
Thank you, Mike. Moving on to general orders, we have ordinance number 24-12, the ordinance of the town of Maryville, authorizing additional appropriations in the 2024 budget, engineering fees fund. You can see there, there's a amount of $20,000 requested.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, seconded by Mrs. Usek for approval of ordinance number 24-12. Questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none, Mr. January, roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Vice President Neal?
Yes.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton?
Aye.
Councilwoman Usek?
Yes.
Councilwoman, Councilman Pettit?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hardaway?
Aye.
President Bella?
Aye.
Seven in favor.
Seven zero, motion carries, thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Moving on tonight to ordinance 24-13, it's ordinance amending town code, Chapter 13, Article 1, entitled Nuance in General, and repealing all town code sections and ordinances or parts thereof in conflict herewith. Mr. Svetinoff, you want to give us a little synopsis of this one, please?
Town Council President, we are amending the definitions section of the nuisance ordinance itself, putting in notice provisions, recovery of town costs concerning nuance itself. There is a new section for failure to maintain building structures that will have to, that will tie in very well with blighted and abandoned buildings. Violations and penalty sections are also established. So at this time, I heavily encourage the town council to go ahead and pass this ordinance. It was approved through Council Affairs.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve 24-13 for discussion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, seconded by Ms. Hardaway, for approval of an ordinance 24-13. For discussion.
Mr. President, to Mr. Svetinoff and Mr. Griffin, all of the, this ordinance and all the following ordinances, I believe, have fines in them, therefore, they are first reading only tonight, correct, Joe?
Correct.
They'll have to be advertised?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on the motion?
Sure. I wanted to comment on page seven. Page seven, it reads, "The amount of the fine shall be determined by the town of Maryville hearings authority or the town court, and each day of the violation shall be deemed a separate offense." Well, I just want to point out the fact that we may be possibly losing our court. So I don't know if that section needs to be amended.
Not yet.
So.
Not yet.
All right.
Well, Mr. President, to Mr. Svetinoff, I think the hearing officer
The hearing officer is separate.
appointed by the town council's Rick Gek.
Is, is separate and distinct from the town court.
Yeah, it's separate.
Yeah, so Rick is still in place until we replace him.
Right. And, and obviously, me being an advocate of the town court, I just thought it was ironic that the town court was mentioned in this ordinance, because we're getting rid of the court, based on the way things are moving right now.
Anything else, Mr. January?
No, sir.
Very good. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, Mr. January, roll call, please.
Yes, President. Vice President Neal?
Yes.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards?
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton?
Aye.
Councilwoman Usek?
Yes.
Councilman Pettit?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hardaway?
Aye.
President Bella?
Yes.
Seven in favor, sir.
Seven in favor, motion carries, thank you. Moving on to ordinance 24-14, the ordinance of the town of Maryville, amending the Maryville municipal code establishing and authorizing the office of Vice President of the Town Council pursuant to Indiana Code 36-5-2-9 and Indiana Code 36-1-3. This is officially creating that office, which wasn't done in our bylaws earlier, and this corrects that.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, with a second by Mrs. Neal?
Yes.
For approval of ordinance 24-14. Questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, Mr. January, roll call?
Yes, sir. Vice President Neal?
Yes.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards?
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton?
Aye.
Councilwoman Usek?
Yes.
Councilman Pettit?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hardaway?
Aye.
President Bella?
Aye.
Seven in favor.
Seven in favor. Thank you. Moving on to ordinances 24-15. It's the ordinance amending town code, Chapter 7.5, entitled "Fire and Hazardous Materials Safety" and repealing all town code sections and ordinances or parts thereof in conflict herewith. Mr. Svetnov?
Town Council President, this is establishing, of course, fire and hazardous material safety protocols. We're establishing a definition section. We're establishing a penalty section and a fine section regarding such materials. Chief, we've been in communication with you on this, and this is something that we've worked together on through your department and my office. Uh, this, of course, received unanimous Council Affairs Committee approval. So, at this time, I encourage the town council to accept same.
Mr. Pettit, you have a motion?
I do, Mr. President, for discussion.
Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Ms. Hardaway for approval of ordinance 24-15. Mr. Pettit?
Just out of curiosity, Mr. President, Chief Yurga, Ed, we talked about this in the committee, as Joe alluded to. One of the questions I raised was, do you have an idea ballpark of the number of false alarm calls you get in a year?
Uh, not offhand.
Not offhand? Waste of manpower, you know? People need to realize that, that it's important.
It's, I just want to misquote myself. It could be, it's significant.
Is it?
Yeah, it's definitely significant, yeah.
Okay.
Any other discussion from the council? Hearing none. Mr. January, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Vice President Neal?
Yes.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards?
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton?
Aye.
Councilwoman Uzleak?
Yes.
Councilman Pettit?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hardaway?
Aye.
President Bella?
Aye.
Seven in favor.
Seven in favor. That motion carries. Moving on tonight to ordinance amending town code, Chapter 4, entitled "Ambulances and Emergency Services and Systems" and repealing all town code sections and ordinances or parts thereof in conflict herewith. This is ordinance 24-16. Mr. Svetnov?
Uh, this has to do with, of course, ambulance and emergency services. We have a section in general rendition of services and oversight. Then we go into the actual medical services, right to refuse service charges and such, which we've worked with the chief and his department on again to make sure they're reasonable and in line with what they need. But it's strictly focusing in on the services themselves and the charges for services. So, at this time, we've worked together with the fire department on this. I heavily recommend to the town council that this be accepted and adopted tonight on first reading.
Motion to approve ordinance 24-16.
Thank you. Mrs. Neal, the motion. Mrs. Uzleak with a second to approve ordinance 24-16.
Mr. President, to Chief Yurga?
Mr. Pettit?
Uh, Ed, has Superior been made aware of the rates in the ordinance, then?
It's, that's where I got the rates from, actually.
That's where you got the rates from?
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
And they're consistent with pretty much everybody else, so, yeah.
Good question. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. Mr. January, could you take the roll, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Vice President Neal?
Yes.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards?
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton?
Aye.
Councilwoman Uzleak?
Yes.
Councilman Pettit?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hardaway?
Aye.
President Bella?
Aye.
Seven in favor.
Seven in favor. Motion carries. Moving on tonight to ordinance 24-17. It's the ordinance repealing town ordinances 19-27B and 22-19 and all parts corresponding town code sections and ordinances or parts thereof in conflict herewith. Mr. Svetnov?
This is a, um, ordinance that basically reestablishes the town court and the town itself. Uh, this is of one that's been, uh, of some discussion. Again, we went over it at Council Affairs level, and I heavily recommend tonight that the town council, um, consider it and take appropriate action as deemed necessary.
Mr. Svetnov, was this recommended to you by Judge Parent for the council to either go up or down on this particular decision?
Uh, yes. Last status conference for the town council people that were there, of course, they know this, but of the town council people that were not there, uh, Judge Parent would like to see some action from the town one way or another. If we're going to recommend that the court stay closed, he would like to see that. If the town council would recommend that the court stay open, he'd like to see that. We'd just like to see some final determination from the town regarding the subject once and for all. Um, so, at this time, this is why the ordinance is brought forward.
Thank you.
Well, if we recommend that the court stay open, what do we have to do with that other ordinance that came through before this?
Well, this ordinance repeals and replaces.
This replaces the old ordinance?
Correct.
Okay. So, are you saying that we could vote to keep the court open with this ordinance?
Correct.
Oh.
This is the appropriate, this is the last time we took, we just had a motion brought to the floor, which was symbolic. This is an actual ordinance that's being brought to the floor, so the town council can vote it up, vote it down. But this is the proper procedure in which if the town council wanted to keep the court open, then this is the way to do it.
The way to do it to keep it open would be to vote for this ordinance?
Correct.
Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
I just wanted to make sure. Thank you, Joe.
Sure.
But we don't take a vote on the court right now, though?
That's what this is, Mrs. Uzleak.
Oh, we do?
This is first reading.
So, we could go ahead and vote if we want the court to take that vote right now?
But this is the first reading, correct? We have to go back?
This is on first reading, yes.
But on the first reading, we could do that?
Correct. To vote to have the court remain open.
Okay. So, if we vote tonight, we could say we're voting to keep the court open?
On first reading.
On first reading.
Correct.
Oh, gotcha.
I'm going to ask for a motion now before we continue discussion because that's the proper way of doing it. Is there a motion for approval of ordinance 24-17?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Uzleak, second by Mrs. What's the second? Haynes Edwards? Questions or comments?
So, maybe I'm in limbo on this right now. Okay, we're going to take the vote on this ordinance. After that, do we vote for the court to stay open or closed?
That's what this ordinance does.
That's what it is.
This is the ordinance for that.
Right.
Oh, we're just considering it. We can't do that right now.
Mr. January, would you please read it into the record?
Yes, sir.
In its entirety?
Thank you.
It's not that long.
Okay, this is, uh, 17, we're on?
Yep.
Yeah, 24-17.
All right. Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, ordinance 24-17. An ordinance repealing town ordinance 19-27B and 27-19 and all corresponding town code sections and ordinance or parts thereof in conflict with, or herewith. Whereas, the town council of Maryville, town council of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, hereafter referred to as Town Council or Town Council previously adopted ordinance 94-5, which has been codified in Chapter 2, Article 8 of the Maryville Code, Town Code. See Maryville Town Code Sections 2-201 through 2-210, where since its adoption, ordinance 94-505, as codified, has generally served to establish the town court of Maryville, hereafter referred to as Town Court or the Town Court. Provide authority and general guidance for court operations and provide that the town shall continue in existence until abolished by the town council. Whereas, on or about December 10th, 2019, the town council adopted ordinance 19-27B, which directed the closure and abolishment of the town court. Whereas, ordinance 19-27B, being subject to legal challenge on or about October 11th, 2022, the town council voted in favor of ordinance number 20-19, which again directed and established procedures for the closure and abolishment of the town court. Whereas, although the town court has limited its acceptance of new filings during the pendency of the noted legal challenges, the town court remains fully staffed, continues to meet regularly to address pending matters, and continues to work diligently at the direction of the Lake Superior Court to process age or inactive files which warrant disposition. Whereas, in light of the number of parties involved in the process of winding down court affairs and the pendency of various legal challenges, at times during this process, no definitive closure date has yet been established for the town court by any entity or governing body with sufficient authority to establish such a date. Whereas, the town council has since determined that the value of the town court to the citizens and constituency of the town of Maryville and the town of Maryville in general is significant, and the public interest is not best served by the closure and abolishment of the town court. Whereas, the town council and the town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana desires for this ordinance to replace, supersede, and repeal entirely ordinance 19-27B and ordinance number 22-19, such that those ordinance will have no further effect on the authority or effect or authority, and the town court shall continue to function at its full capacity as it has since the adoption of ordinance 94-05. Now, therefore, be it ordained by the town council of the town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, as follows. Section 1, that ordinance 19-27B is hereby repealed in its entirety. Section 2, that ordinance 22-19 is hereby repealed in its entirety. Section 3, that this ordinance shall replace and supersede both ordinance 19-27B and ordinance 22-19 to the extent that neither ordinance 19-27B nor ordinance 22-19 shall have any force or authority upon adoption of this ordinance. Section 4, that upon adoption of this ordinance, all sections of the town code of Maryville, which have been modified or supplemented by either ordinance 19-27B or ordinance 22-19, shall be stricken to the extent that those sections of the town code of Maryville shall be restored to the full form in which they existed prior to the adoption of ordinance 19-27B and/or ordinance 22-19. Section 5, that to the extent not otherwise provided herein, this ordinance shall preserve, excuse me, uh, shall preserve full effect and authority as Sections 2-201 through 2-210 of the Maryville Town Code, as those sections existed prior to the passage of ordinance 19-27B. Section 6, that if any section, clause, provision, or portion of this ordinance shall be held to be invalid or unconstitutional by any court of competent jurisdiction, such decisions shall not affect any other section, clause, provision, or portion of this ordinance. Section 7, that all existing ordinances or parts thereof in conflict with the provisions of this ordinance shall hereby be deemed null, void, and of no legal effect, and are specifically repealed. Section 8, that this ordinance shall take effect and shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and adoption by the town council. Introduced at the town council meeting of May the 14th, 2024, duly ordained and adopted this day, May 24th, by the town council, the town council of the town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana.
Thank you, Eric.
You're welcome, President Bella.
Okay, Attorney Joe, can I make a motion to keep the court, or do I have to vote on this?
You already made a motion, Mrs. Uzleak. You made a motion, you made a motion to approve ordinance 24-17, which was just read into the record.
Yes.
You've already done that.
Now, what about the court?
And now, we're voting to keep the court open.
This is about the court.
Okay. This will cover the court being open with my motion, right?
If it passes, yes.
If it passes.
Yes.
Correct.
I know. I just wanted that to be
Sure. Understood.
To be said to the record. Okay. Okay.
All right.
So, I already made the motion, and I'd like to see the court stay open.
Any other discussion on this?
Yes. I'd like to know for the record again what the reason for the court wanting to be closed
You're the original, Mr. Pettit. You want to answer that?
Well, the original, and I see Trista in the audience. Trista, you might want to come up to the podium for the financial, uh, discussion. Year in, year out, Councilor Haynes Edwards, this, the court has lost money, according to our financial advisor. And it has reached, uh, there's a couple ways to look at this, folks, and I was one of the original ones that voted for this back in 19. Before Judge Velasco was caucused in, we closed this court. We passed this ordinance. And then Judge Jones was appointed to the county court. And so, the caucus took place with the three candidates knowing that the town council took this action. And with it losing the money, Trista, what's the total now that the court has lost in the audit?
The review that we did started back in 2011, which was the most recent year that the town operational part of the court budget ended in a positive number, which was $43,000. Since then, the amount of money lost, meaning expenditures outspent the revenues, is $2,247,280.
Sorry, Trista, one more time?
Does that go back 18 years? You mentioned 18 years ago, we lost $43,000. Now, on this $2 million figure, when did that come into existence? The loss?
Mr. January, let's let Trista answer.
From 2011 forward is the computation time. So, at the end of 2011, the revenues were higher than the expenditures by $43,447. Moving forward, though, each year was operating in a deficit in the operational budget of the court. The first year, the deficit was $25,000. The second year was $4,000. That third year, which is 2014, jumped to $89,500 deficit. So, then, that total, as each year's deficit grew higher and higher, the total now is the $2,247,000.
Not to mention the amount of legal fees we've paid, both for Joe to represent the town and Judge Velasco's legal team. Those are coming out of the town, the taxpayers are paying for that, which I believe is in the neighborhood of $240,000 while this litigation has gone on.
Could you verify that figure, please, Trista?
Yes. Currently, we have attorney's fees for Mr. Svetnov through February of this year. Those total $85,580. The town has received bills for the court's attorney only through December of 2023. So, we are five and a half months behind, um, the calendar on those. That total, again, through December of '23, is $152,921. So, the total of those equals $238,501.
The, Mr. President, the problem I have, and I voted against it, and when the roll call comes up, I'm going to vote against it again. And I also voted, while I've been on this dius 21 years, I voted to eliminate the EMS department because we had the same problem with the ambulance service being run with two paramedics. It was constantly in the red. When I served as town manager, I would come to you, Rick, as a council, and we would be writing off bills that we could not collect from people of $50,000, $60,000, $70,000 every year because we couldn't get it out of their insurance and we couldn't get it out of the Medicaid. And the budget for the EMS was constantly in the red when John Patalis was Clerk Treasurer and I was town manager. This is about finances. This has nothing to do about service and how we feel and the residents aren't getting a fair shake. Again, I've, I don't know even how many Maryville residents come through the town court. Chief, I mean, are these local people that you're writing tickets to that come through the town court? What's the percentage of Maryville residents of 36,000 people? Who's using the court? What percentage? 10%? 18%? Should we keep bleeding this thing to the tune of $2.2 million? It doesn't make a whole lot of financial sense.
Did you want the chief to answer that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would, it's hard to say, but I would say roughly around 18 to 20%. It's, I can't, I can't really give an answer. But, I mean.
Is the county able to be able to afford court hearings with all this going on? And will the people have to go to the county, then? For their court hearing?
I'm sorry, Ms. Juszczyk, are you asking me that question?
Lake County, will they pick up the court hearings?
Yes, Councilor Juszczyk, they will.
Okay.
So if Lake County.
Maybe you can answer that.
Oh, go ahead.
Let's have Joe answer, he's the attorney.
The, the Lake County Court system is designed to accept cases in. We have been working with the clerk's office to design, hopefully, a program to allow those, conversion of those cases into the, the county court system itself. That's what the county courts are designed to do, is efficiently hear these cases and dispose of these cases as quickly as possible, so. There, there was some discussion in the old ordinance of duplicity of effort. Since the town court's located here, and the county court is located a mile and a half away, why not let the county court handle those cases in a more efficient manner? But that was something that was discussed in the ordinance itself.
Are they able to handle it, though, Joe? I hear they're like one year behind right now in court cases.
And if we get rid of the court, and you voted to get rid, and you spoke about getting rid of the EMS system, we might as well get rid of our Maryville Police Department, because county can take over.
So, also wanted to add to this as the clerk treasurer of the town. I haven't been here for thirteen years, I've been in the town for ten years, and it's been a pleasure being here, but operating the court, just like operating the police department, is not just about money. And part of the thing, when we're talking about a two point two million dollar cumulative loss over thirteen years, yes, that is significant, but we also need to look at the underlying facts, how many tickets were being written, were people being discouraged from writing tickets that contributed to the loss and basically justified a reason to get rid of the court? I don't believe that we've been writing enough tickets in the town, because I see too many Illinois license plates around here, and I'm from Illinois, I change my license plate, and I see too many other code violations, which we've addressed tonight with this, but then in addition to that, if we get rid of the court, we will still have to rely on other people to provide the services. Just today, in this ordinance that I didn't have the chance to read, but ordinance twenty-four dash thirteen, we went through the process of establishing a hearing authority. That's going to cost the town money. The RDC that you're a part of right now is already giving four hundred thousand dollars a year to the school corporation for a truancy court. The largest part, ten percent of the town may not, may only come here, but a large part of those people are from truancy. And we're talking about people that are already having problems making it to school in different things, and now they got to go to another town in order to do it? These may be some juvenile delinquents, so a, as a result of our actions today. So I, I think that we definitely need to just take it out of perspective of it's a money issue, because I believe the money issue can be mitigated if we just do what we need to do as a town, and make sure, just like we did today, by enforcing these regulations and ordinances that are on the books. Speeding, my son almost got a ticket, and I thank God he didn't get a ticket, you all gave him a warning, but we need to start enforcing some of the laws that are on the books. And it's, this is like the Wild West, this whole thing with the food tax, we need to do some things that can help justify keeping a court, just like Sherrville, which is a much smaller town, they have a court. Obart, much smaller than us, and we are the largest town in Indiana, and we're saying we can't afford to have a court? I'm saying we can't afford, can't afford not to have a court. I think that's a block out.
We get rid of our town court, we get rid of our power.
Is there any other discussion from the council members?
Yes, I pushed for the court X amount of years when it came into existence, we had maybe twenty thousand people at that time. Today, we are pushing forty thousand people, and I think with perseverance and the police department, I think we can go further with the court, and I agree with Eric on that amount of money that you just talked about, Eric, coming from, it can be maybe brought back into existence.
Correct. And now we've got this food and beverage tax, which is used for something else, that's freeing, that should free up theoretically some other line items.
Well, we are a town on the move, we have a new community center. And we could afford to do that, we took out bonding at twenty-five million.
I'm going to caution, I'm going to caution everybody right now.
I'm sorry.
If we're looking at the food and beverage tax as some type of revenue source.
It is a revenue source.
Please, as quickly as the town, or the state legislature put that in effect, they can take it away.
Exactly.
So what I'm saying to you is, be very careful on how you treat the food and beverage.
No, I'm not saying that we're going to use the food and beverage tax to support the court, but the fact that we are now getting some money from the food and beverage tax, that's going to take some pressure off the town, and we'll be able to use money that we would have had to devote towards running toward, running the food, the community center to other things.
It's not quite that simplified, Eric.
It's not that simple, but at the bottom line, that's, that's how it works.
It's not an operational fund to run the community.
I'm not talking about the food and beverage tax in itself, I'm talking about the fact that we have some additional revenue that no other town in this area has.
Right.
Well, here's the other, here's the other thing to keep in mind, ladies and gentlemen, Shawna brought up the, the police department. Keep in mind that we are currently at our population, we are understaffed by how many officers, chief?
We should be anywhere from eighty-eight to ninety officers with the current population and businesses and traffic that we have through here.
And secondly, Mr. Bella sent out an email that the FOP wants to sit down and talk to us. We just renegotiated that contract last year, you know what they're going to be asking for. They're going to be asking for raises, because Munster just gave a twenty-one percent raise to all their officers last night.
Police department does much more work than what our police officers do, and they're not understaffed as well. And again, if we're going to say close the court, why not let judge serve out his term? And then in four years, if it's not doing what you think it should be doing, shut the court down.
Well, the judge is going to fill in his term, no matter what happens.
Yeah, he finishes his term.
I mean, I know that.
That's why he wants the court.
That's why we want the court to stay open, just to say that it, we had an opportunity to see what happened, and to try to get out of this deficit that for eighteen years fell and got us into a two million dollar deficit.
Mr. President, can we let Judge Velasco talk a minute?
Public comments, public comments.
There's no public comment on the first reading.
First reading, yeah.
We, I watched, we, us make exceptions, we should get the public speaking comment before the vote.
Not on a first reading ordinance, Brian, we've never done that, okay? So thank you, though. Trista, what's the budget for the town courts? Is it four hundred eighty thousand, give or take?
Four hundred ninety-one thousand dollars.
Four hundred ninety-one thousand.
In the general.
So here, here's my concern.
In the general funds.
I have not heard, I just came through an election, talked to a lot of residents walking door to door, nobody said anything to me about the town court, asking me to keep the town court open, nothing like that. What I've heard at the doors is that while there's a lot of speeders in town, we need more cops, we need more money for the police department, we need money to buy all the retention ponds, because homeowner associations can't take care of these ponds, so we need to buy them all and then maintain them. We need to find money for employee raises, we need road repairs, potholes and new paving all over town, we need more traffic control, that's what I hear from my constituents. So I'll be voting for my constituents tonight to close the town court, because that's four hundred eighty thousand dollars or four ninety-one, excuse me, minus the judge's pay and one clerk for the next three years, that we could put toward those other items. We just heard the chief, we're twenty-eight police officers short, where is the money going to come from for that? So it's, it's a choice of services, we don't have to have a town court, we don't even have to have a street department, you know, but we have to have a police department, and we have to keep people safe. We need money for the fire departments, for equipment, and their equipment is not cheap, believe me.
Do you want to hear my numbers from manpower?
It's just choices of where to spend money, and I think that's what we're talking about. It's not about personalities, or gee, the judge did this, or Shawna did that, it has nothing to do with that. It's about choices of what kind of services we want to provide.
It's about keeping our town as a town, and we're supposed to have a town court, just like the rest of the cities and towns do.
Until nineteen ninety-four.
And, and when we got it, it was doing pretty well until the officer were instructed to stop writing tickets so it can make it look like the courts go down.
Well, people in my ward, the fourth ward, they wanted the court. I went through an election too and took a poll. I would say about eight out of ten wanted the court. They felt like we have a little bit more crime, we've got more traffic, and maybe we should have that court. Maybe I don't agree with you.
Well, that's really.
Mr. President, with respect to the last election, there was twenty-three hundred people that voted in our town, twenty-one hundred of them voted for either meat or pork, four hundred and bulls voted for any one of you visiting in there at the council.
But clarify, Judge, you're, you and Eric are running townwide, we're running within our wards.
But what I'm saying, out of the town, the reflection is apparently, yeah, twenty-one hundred, twenty-three hundred voted in that section. They didn't have to vote, they didn't even have to come out, but they did, they also voted for her over there, and we got seventy-five more votes than I did. Yeah, you're right, county, uh, citywide, what you're saying is, look, closing of court doesn't have to do anything with money, okay? It only has to do with the fact that the law says you could do it on certain year, when you suggested it back in two thousand and nineteen, I stand by it back there, and I'm out here with a, a then effective elective councilman White, and we knew that you were doing it in the wrong year, because the statute said two thousand and eighteen, or every four year. Well, in the course of the litigation, they cost all this money, what happened was two thousand and twenty-two came, is that when you attempted to then get the other ordinance, which is what we're talking about right now, and that was the proper year. The next proper year under the law of the state will be two thousand and twenty-six. So I'm saying to you, and, 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 No reason is required by the state law, and that's the case all along. Now, you want to justify that to the public by saying, oh, it's the money that, of all the money that, that Trista opened there, it's mentioned, I wasn't here to do any, to do anything about it, okay? Uh, from two thousand and eleven to two thousand and, December of two thousand and nineteen, that didn't look bad. So, as, as we stand right now, if we did nothing, the court would technically be able to be told when we get done, go, go for the, for the meantime. Uh, but if that is ordinance, you'll give us at least a chance to do something until two thousand and twenty-six, when we have another opportunity to do that. Uh, yes, with respect to, uh, cases being filed in, uh, in, uh, county court? Yes. I live around the U.S. Period? Yes, living in the U.S. Period. It's going to cost additional money to close the court, and this is technically, don't care about anybody, it will, it will pause for the Odyssey system to pick up potential cases, it will pause, uh, according to the Attorney General's Office, the missing money because they are the only entity that, that, that legally hold money that are unclaimed. And so they will want that bond money that was lost prior to two thousand and, uh, eleven, okay? And at that point, that loss was four hundred thousand dollars, we got some of that money back for insurance. So, the balance is about three hundred seventy-five thousand. You already, as the clerk has pointed out, you're proposing to give this coast system four hundred thousand dollars for a court that they can't, there's no way they can do this, okay? The only, the only place in Indiana that can have a truancy court is in county where they don't have a, a county court, and the, uh, county, um, pastor.
Ross Township.
Trustee.
Is all you want, through a special education, they have a court assigned to them. We don't have that, that's never gonna happen because, basically, we're not the public and we follow the medical practices and everything else with that. So, you respectfully gonna wind up shutting down the truancy court minimum, okay?
So, Mr. Svetnov can't do a truancy court?
Last time, that the money that's now being generated by fine only, uh, since the beginning of, I want to say, the end of January, uh, and, and, and it's bringing more money. Now, the money that Trista mentioned, it only accounts for money that actually goes to the town. The actual revenue that's generated, that goes to the county and it goes to the state is much more, okay? So, from the four hundred thousand dollars or so budget, what actually got collected, the difference is a lot more than the money that she mentioned.
How much money is that, Trista? That goes to the state and the county that really doesn't affect us in any way?
The numbers that I've given to you are for the operational expenses and revenues of the town court. The expenses that have to run through the clerk's office and the revenues that can be collected for the town, on the town's behalf, for use here. There are other revenues that are involved in the court fees. There always have been, there's, there's been no hiding of that, but they go directly to the state, they go directly to the county, there is nothing that the town can use them for. It is per statute. It goes to cover judicial salaries outside of the town, judicial pensions outside of the town. It is nothing at all here that the town can use or can keep, and so it's not included in these numbers. That's a totally separate situation. It's a totally separate part.
That will continue if the county takes over the cases and does it, right?
Absolutely. And so, yes, judge is correct when he says more revenues than this are collected, however, this analysis, these numbers that we've provided to you, that we were asked to give you, are for the town's operational side, not the rest of what has to go to the state and what has to go to the county.
Now, Judge, didn't, didn't the, uh...
One final thing. No, no court in this state or anywhere is a property-making entity. All of it, all the courts throughout the state lose money because that's the nature of the system. They're not, no words did anybody say, you know, we can't keep the county courts and we are fourteen or fifteen of them because they're not making enough money to pay for themselves. No, no.
Well, yeah, I think City of Hammond did that, they actually said that, because it just costs too much money.
Well, and, and one that cost to them, I think, uh, John, uh, he mentioned earlier because, uh, the judge that happened to be during, uh, also dealt with them, and he said, well, that's, I, you know, truancy, the court actually costs a lot of money as well, you know, um...
Yeah, okay.
So, so basically, it all had come down to, money can be the issue, property-making can be the issue. Yeah, we bought, we bought, what, forty-five million dollars into, into the center right now, and which we paid four point five million bonding to keep it. Is it making any money, Mr. President? The answer to that, as you and I know, is no. Would it ever make any profit? No, no that.
I don't know that.
And are we gonna get rid of it? Because, I mean, it's a, it's a jewel of the community. I am happy that it's a void, but certain things do not require that they need property, that's all I'm saying.
Okay. So, Mr. Svetnov, tell us about the appeal, and has it been cleared and is it over now? Or what?
The, what happened is, we won at the trial court level, then the judge and his attorney appealed to the Court of Appeals level, that was then rendered in our favor. Then there was a petition to transfer that was filed with the Supreme Court. Supreme Court denied transfer, which basically stated that they were not gonna hear the case, and the matter now has been certi, it was certified today, that it is an opinion on record that the town of Maryville won this litigation.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments from the council?
I just wanted to add one thing, just in terms of coming up with four hundred and eighty thousand dollars. There are multiple ways that we can do that. One, with the community center, we're constantly losing money, and we are not operating it like a business. Uh, we need to inc, start charging user fees. That will take some pressure off the town, and we can possibly start, uh, addressing the officers and things that we know, everyone in the town knows we need. We need to stop a lot of the corporate giveaways, uh, that we're giving. And then the, uh, school corporation, I believe sincerely that we must work with the school corporation, uh, they have needs, they, they have to implement a truancy court, and then in, in terms of expanding, uh, the, um, uh, the, uh, community center. One of the things that I've always said is we've got a community center across the street, uh, with the Maryville School Corporation, we just have to start working with them in an intergovernmental way, uh, so that we can start reducing our collective costs and doing a better service to the town of Maryville and Ross Township. And then finally, just enforce the code. If we do those four things, we'll, uh, supersede four hundred and eighty thousand dollars in costs that it takes to operate the court, and even the judge, uh, has, uh, admitted that we can probably reduce that cost somewhat, but there, there is, I, I don't see a reason as a, as the fiscal officer, I'm not a financial advisor, but I am a, a financial advisor to the town, I'm a financial advisor professionally and a CPA. We can work with this town, we could, we could make the court, uh, we can fund the court, just by doing the right thing.
Mr. Griffin, with your thirty-two years of experience as the Highland Clerk Treasurer, I'm gonna put you on the spot, sorry, would you, if you were sitting up here, would you retain, you knowing all the numbers and figures that we've had and studied, uh, the four hundred ninety-one thousand dollar budget to operate, would you keep the court open in your, in our situation? Sorry, it's a good question.
I'm sure he, he's gonna admit, you gotta read behind the number.
Madam Vice President, Mr. Clerk Treasurer, uh, I serve at the pleasure of the council, so I will execute the policy that you adopt. I'm currently honoring the policy that's in place to promote closure, and it's been, and the courts have supported you. If the council decides it wants to redeem that, turn that around by adopting this count, this ordinance tonight and the next time, you need two readings to do that, I'll honor that as well. I would rather not directly answer whether or not I'd operate the court, but tell you why I understood you doing that. First, we are charging user fees at the community center, there's just not enough.
Not residents.
We are, we are charging user fees, we're reviewing it all the time.
But he's saying...
We need to do it more adequately because the budget requirements are, are not part of that revenue. We are getting it in, uh, but we do need to retrofit that, there's no question in my mind about that. Question of having a court, I can tell you an anecdote. I was serving as a clerk treasurer at the time, and the clerk treasurer, who was incumbent at the time, called me and told me of your intention to actually open a court, and he asked me what I thought, and I said, well, why are you doing it? And at the time, he thought it might promote, uh, the opportunity for new revenues, and my answer to him was, if you wish to have additional service, because at that time you had the Twin Towers, it was populated by a number of attorneys that populated it, if you thought it would be a convenience for them to be able to go to your court, as you know, the statute gave you a little more authority to hear cases that most city and town courts don't get to hear, if you think that that will be a good benefit for you as an additional service, uh, that'll serve that population and that nexus and that networking will endure to more support for the town in other ways, maybe it'll be a recruiting method for you to get members of boards and commissions and that sort of thing, then certainly proceed. But here's the rub, um, I also told him he wasn't doing enough levy appeals at the time because your, your growth has exceeded the way your revenues have been generated with the property tax. You've got a twelve million dollar general fund budget, which includes the four hundred and ninety thousand dollars for the court, that is competing with the growth on a levy that's not adequate. Your levy right now is fixed at a little over eight million, and that has to cover a lot of things, mostly public safety. Most cities and towns use their property tax levy to support the funding of public safety. It's a very hard case. If you eliminate the court, you, you basically can free up something between two hundred and eighty to perhaps three hundred and eighty thousand dollars of levy, and I'm figuring net of what there is some production from, what is collected from fines and the other operational issues. That's a consideration. So if you're considering that you can get an instant sort of solution for some of the needs, the pressures that are on public safety, that would be available to you. On the other hand, it is a service that is provided. You, the judge has been elected, and he is entitled to hold that office for four years, regardless if there's a court or not. There's some talented people in there, I don't know them all, so I can't say they're all talented, I haven't met them all, but the ones I've met are talented, uh, and I hurt for them if they're going to be dislocated suddenly, that's my human response. But that's not the response the policymakers have to consider alone. It is the comp, it's really the tension between resources quickly being available to another element of public safety, the tactical law and safe, uh, public safety, or continuing to find a way to look for new ways to fund for the police and fireside, and continue to offer the courts, uh, which do provide a service, they do exact justice. But I do want to remind the council, the law's written in such a way that the money that you made available to the schools to do the truancy court, um, is uniquely available to the schools. It isn't necessarily gonna be available to be transferred if you continue to have the court to support that function. It's an odd way that the law's written, the, the use of allocation area proceeds are getting stricter, the, the legislature's been tightening that up for the last fifteen years, so it's not clear that that would suddenly become available to a department functioning of our town. It is allowed to be used in educational settings because they broaden the law for that. Having said that, I, I apologize for being apparently impertinent for not answering your question directly, Mr. President and members of the council, but I do feel that I try to be responsive as my position has, and still allow me to continue to serve you as your town manager, executing the policies that you lawfully adopt cheerfully and with all my energy.
Fair enough, Michael, thank you. Anything else to add on the financial side, Trista, before we, uh, call for the vote?
I don't believe so unless there's a specific question. I know that everyone's received the summary, um, and trust that you all have read that, and if you had questions about it, I'm certainly happy to answer. Again, we look specifically at the financial reports from the clerk treasurer's office and report on that data and summarize it in a way that is digestible and, um, reviewable, so...
I have a question.
Mrs. Uzlech.
Can I talk, please?
Absolutely.
Okay. If we took out twenty-five million dollar in bonds for the community center, and we are being charged five percent interest on those bonds, how much money are we paying for the interest?
Well, I can take a moment and look at the document to answer that question for you. We are not the firm that was involved in issuing those bonds. Um, I do have a copy of that. Uh, keep in mind, please, that, that interest is over the long period, the life of the, the repayment of the loan, of the bond.
But keep in mind, ladies and gentlemen, RDC members, as your president, those two bond issues are not being paid by the town citizens, those do not show up on your taxes. You know, me being the warehouse ward, as I was dubbed, those big buildings out at Silos and in Amerplex, those are the guys that are paying the bond issues right now. It was restructured by Bob Swentz, he is the best in the state, I trust him wholeheartedly, that's why we did it, to take it off the taxpayers' back. And Eric's right, now that those are off their back, we probably do need to charge residents' user fees to get into the community center. But those two bond issues are not the responsibility, quote unquote, of the town of Maryville.
Who pays, who's paying?
They're paying, they're paying their taxes.
Who pays the interest?
They, we do, we, we will pay the interest, Aralia will pay the interest on those bonds, Margie, but that's coming from those big boxes that are out there at Amerplex, Midwest Tire, Domino's, all those folks in Amerplex and Silos at Sanders Farm, they're all paying that with their abatements. That's just the way economic development works.
But we're moving forward with that, which is good.
Right.
I agree with you.
Right.
And I'm hoping we could do that with the court. If not now, maybe someday, but I'm for the court, I'm sorry.
You don't have to be sorry, not a problem. Any other, Mr. Neal?
Yes, so basically, with the closing of the court, it would save the, save the town about, roughly about three hundred thousand dollars in the budget.
Only, well, only while we're paying the judge's salary and one clerk. Otherwise, it would be...
For the next four years.
It would be four hundred ninety-one thousand after the judge's term is up.
So he loses his employees and gets to keep one employee.
Right.
As of when, he loses employees? Because for the next four, for, for the remainder of this term, he's obligated.
Yes, we pay him, right, no matter what.
We're obligated to pay him and the staff.
No, not the staff.
No, just the staff, just one person.
One clerk.
Clerk, books and papers.
Right. Any other discussion from the council? This is a first reading ordinance, we're gonna address it again at the next council meeting, so let's just call the roll, Mr. January.
Vice President Neal.
I'm gonna abstain.
Pardon me?
I'm going to abstain from voting.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards.
She's abstaining, she said.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards.
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Uzlech.
Yes, for the court.
Councilman Pettit.
No.
Councilwoman Hardaway.
No.
President Bella.
No.
So, in fact, so we had one, two, three, tie, I'm the top working vote.
No, motion fails for abstain. Motion fails for that.
So, how does it count, attorney?
It counts as a, it's not past first reading.
Gonna have to be brought back up in two weeks for first reading again.
Right, which it would have anyway, no matter what.
Well, it would've been second reading if it, which way it would've gone, but...
Okay, moving on to ordinance twenty-four dash eighteen, it's an ordinance to amend sections two dash one thirty-five through two dash one thirty-nine of the Code of Ordinances for the town of Maryville, State of Indiana, to revise the Maryville Purchasing Code, all pursuant to Indiana Code thirty-six dash one dash five. Mr. Svetnov.
I'll defer to town manager Griffin on this one.
Mr. Griffin.
Mr. President, Madam Vice President, Mr. Clerk Treasurer, members of the council, venerable town attorney, uh, thank you. Mr. President, this was presented to the Council Affairs Committee at my recommendation, but in part from a prompt we had during one of our work sessions where we noticed that we were trying to engage on the ARPA meeting, uh, to set prices and purchase based on our current code site, and our code has basically not been amended from the original law passage. IC five dash twenty-two got adopted into town, uh, law, into Indiana state law in around nineteen seventy, nineteen ninety-seven. At that time in nineteen ninety-seven, the idea was to liberalize and also perfect the purchasing policies that had been sort of antiquated and occupied a place in thirty-six dash one dash ten and thirty-six dash one eleven, which are still in place. This is an attempt to try to update our purchasing code, it actually brings us up to date. For example, the small, uh, purchasing threshold is currently listed in our code is twenty-five thousand dollars, this actually sets it at fifty thousand dollars, and under, technically the way our old, our current code reads, you've identified the purchasing authorities properly, but, and essentially the department heads are still listed, as well as the clerk treasurer's purchasing agents, but we didn't define their authority to act without having to go to the purchasing agency. So technically, if I want to buy a bubblegum ball, I would have to go to the council under our current code, and that wasn't the intention of the legislature, I believe. So many communities, when they adopted this, actually created a threshold that, within the confines of the budget, and some additional constraints for certain things that it can't be used, this proposes to give a purchasing threshold, so every department head is identified as a purchasing agent, including the clerk treasurer, who's in this case acting as the department head of the Department of Finance or the Office of Clerk Treasurer, of fifteen thousand dollars. They manage budgets that are vastly bigger than that, they can't exceed that. It also doesn't allow them to engage in, uh, any contract for a lease or a service of over a year. It doesn't allow them to engage counsel, but it does preserve the clerk treasurer's right under state law, where he can engage, uh, an attorney outside, that, so, and also has express language, it doesn't hinder the clerk treasurer's statutory authority to take steps that this might constrain, so all of those are preserved in here. But for most of us, we can't engage an attorney, it does make the council the exclusive purchaser of insurance, uh, and then it just clarifies by incorporating more of the state law into our code, which at one time in graduate school was taught to me as a best practice in public affairs, not in law school. It kind of is a pendulum, the pendulum may be swinging back. In any event, that's what it proposes to do. I, I hope the council at least favor it with a first reading, and, uh, do read it, there's a lot in there that you may want to review, there may be policies, perhaps the fifteen thousand dollars seems high. I will tell you, relative to our budget size, uh, and the town's overall purchasing, it's not that very much. Police chief alone is in charge of a budget that exceeds six million dollars when you consider, uh, the other places where he's got funding that is expended on behalf of the department. You've trusted them to be able to make budgets and manage them, they should be allowed to do those purchases with the constraints that are identified, and I feel like it gives us more guidance than we've had before. It does comport with the state law, and the town attorney will tell you that he has reviewed it as to form and legality, so nothing we're proposing here would be against public policy, but where you have discretion, you certainly should review it and make a determination of fifteen thousand is too high. And I thank the council president and the council for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. This is the document that Mr. January also reviewed, is that right, Eric?
Yes, sir.
Any questions on it?
No, I think that, uh, a lot of the provisions that he has in here are definitely, um, overdue.
Okay. Did you have a motion, Mr. Pettit?
Yes, I do. Motion to approve ordinance twenty-four dash eighteen.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, seconded by Mrs. Uzlech, to approve twenty-four dash eighteen on first reading. Questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, Mr. January, roll call, please, on this first reading ordinance twenty-four dash eighteen.
Yes, sir, President. Vice President Neal.
Yes.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards.
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Uzlech.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hardaway.
Yes.
President Bella.
Aye.
Seven in favor.
Seven to zero, motion carries, thank you.
I thank the council.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Moving on, we don't have any second reading ordinances before us tonight, we do have one resolution, it's a resolution providing for a transfer of appropriation bal, excuse me, appropriation balances from and among major budget classifications in the Park and Recreation Department, and in the general fund as requested by the proper officer, and forwarded to the town council for its action pursuant to code, and it lists the code. Mr. Griffin.
Mr. President, members of the council, Madam Vice President, Mr. Clerk Treasurer, thank you. Uh, I am, as you know, it is customary in most communities that have a full-time town manager, to make the manager be the acting department head in the absence of a department head, except in terms of public safety. I am the acting Parks and Recreation Director because of that vacancy, so I am the proper officer to recommend this to you. As the council is aware, I actually had an informative meeting earlier this week with leadership in the Legacy Foundation arranged by our town attorney, and we have a better understanding now of how we can access, as you're, you're aware, you thoughtfully put together a capital fund that is funding for which is generated by sponsorships that supports the Dean and Barbara White Community Center. In order to access that money, which is held in trust with the Legacy Foundation, uh, the Dean and Barbara White Committee made a recommendation of this council at prior meetings for roughly about seventy-five thousand dollars worth of expenses, and the council also approved those because we didn't have our purchasing code, we would need it anyway with the purchasing code that we're proposing to look at. Having said that, we needed to make a, a quick attempt to make sure that I could make the purchase, this is specifically going to help the entire body of the money that, uh, was approved to be done, and then I will apply to the Legacy Foundation to be reimbursed as we purchase. We needed this to be done quickly, however, because one of the things that's pending is that floor tile covering that everybody wanted, that's about thirty-eight thousand dollars roughly of this cost. So our hope is, is that this will authorize it. Uh, it is in the general fund, the Parks and Recreation Department, we're just moving it from one line to another, so there's no net change in budget, and as we receive the reimbursements, they will go into the general fund, and I'll return to the council at the appropriate time and ask for an additional appropriation to restore the four hundred series at that time, once we get all the money collected back from Legacy, as the purchases that you authorized are made and reimbursed for. Uh, I do understand that, and what we'll do during budget, I just want to give you a heads up, Madam Chair of the Budget and Finance Committee, that we will think about this, and each budget cycle will identify what fund we want to have those costs posted to, we'll make an account or an appropriation that's appropriate to that, we'll protect it and say it can't be moved or touched unless it's in consequence of us authorizing a purchase that's gonna get reimbursed from the sponsorship fund. Now that I know that, I wish I'd known this last year, I would've helped inform the budget process that we're under now, but I know that I can do that for next year, so this is really sort of a step that we need in order to fulfill what you've already authorized us to do, and as I said, as we get the reimbursements from Legacy Foundation, I'll bring that back to the council for your action in favor, I hope, to reappropriate the money.
Thank you, Michael. So the, the figure for the record is exactly seventy-five thousand seven hundred seventeen dollars, and as Mr. Griffin indicated, the net effect is zero.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, Chair, recognize Ms. Hardaway for the second, for approval of Resolution twenty-four dash eleven. Questions or comments from the council? This is a resolution, a voice vote is adequate, is that right, Mr. Svetnov?
Correct.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Ms. Shine, would you take us to the next part of the agenda, which is BZA and large gathering actions?
Yes, Mr. President, we have three petitioners, our first petitioner is Steiner Sines, could you approach the podium, please? It is a, uh, variance of use approval for Denmark College and Dennis Beavers to erect the electronic message center at eighty-one oh one Polo Club Drive. Petitioner is seeking a variance of use approval from section twenty-one dash one eighty-nine eight to allow an electronic message center in a planned unit development on three point two three five acres. More specifically, petitioner wants to locate this four by seven electronic message center at eighty-one oh one Polo Club Drive to the existing sign and an existing sign panel. Petitioner states that the setback of the sign is far enough away from Route thirty so as not to cause traffic issues. The petitioner, the customer, only wants to be able to update the community while using a more modern informational form of communication. Petitioner submits that the approval of the proposed variance of use approval would not be detrimental to the public health, safety, moral, and general welfare. be detrimental to the public health, safety, moral, and general welfare, and will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other properties in the immediate vicinity for the purpose already permitted, nor substantially diminish or impair values. Petitioner will advertise town events when requested.
Do you have anything to add, sir?
No, thank you for, for allowing me to be here. Tom Steiner, owner of Steiner Signs and Graphics. I appreciate all the hard work Sheila and the town has done for us. And we just look forward to the opportunity for Denmark to be able to update their sign and to allow the, the town as well to utilize that sign for various needs that you might have.
Thank you, Tom.
Do you own this sign company?
Pardon me?
Do you own this?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Yes. Seventeen years.
And you are offering to advertise for the town, too?
Yes, that is correct.
That's one of our requirements, Mrs. Uslak, for all.
Pardon?
That's a requirement for all electronic signs.
Oh, thank you.
Chair, I entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Uslak, second by Mrs. Chandler Felton, thank you. Discussion. Ms. Shine, anything to add?
No, it's, um, it's an existing sign. And they, it, the sign had went through an ordinance previously, years and years ago, for the size of it, in case anybody noticed the size of it. It went through a variance from developmental standards years and years ago. But they're just, they're using an existing panel, so they're not creating any, making it bigger in any way.
Very good. Mr. January, roll call, vote, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Vice President Neal.
Yes.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards.
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Uslak.
Yes.
Councilwoman Pettit.
Councilman Pettit. Yes.
Councilwoman Hardaway.
Yes.
President Bella. Seven in favor.
I didn't vote yet, but I vote, I vote aye.
Eric, you keep doing that, I'm gonna have Kathy sit here next time.
Yeah, I apologize.
It's Chandler Felton, Chandler Felton, Haynes Edwards, we gotta get it right, eventually.
Mr. President.
Okay. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. President and the board.
Kind of.
And if I may say one more thing.
Sure.
On behalf, as owner of Steiner Signs and Graphics, and also a twenty-seven-year veteran from the City of Valparaiso Fire Department. And with, with the comments here tonight on the memorial, I would like the, the chief to get ahold of me. We would like to make a donation towards that as well.
Oh, fantastic, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes, nice. Ms. Shine.
Yes. Our next petitioner is Monica Snyder. She's seeking special exceptional approval from section twenty-one dash one thirty-six to allow a childcare center to be located at fifty-six eighty-one Broadway. Petitioner is seeking special exception approval from section twenty-one dash one thirty-six to allow a childcare center on point two oh two acres in a C-two community commercial zoning center. Petitioner would like to relocate, expand an existing daycare business to fifty-six eighty-one Broadway. Petitioner currently owns and operates a home daycare at twenty-nine fourteen West Seventy-eighth Place. Petitioner will adhere to the Indiana's highest quality early learning standards while offering a safe, play-based, hands-on approach to learning and nurturing environment. The childcare center will inspire, support, and promote a child cognitive, physical, and emotional growth. Early learning years are the most critical years of development for humans by the age of five. Ninety percent of the brain development and growth is completed. Magic Little Souls Academy goals are to provide quality care for the children. They are a Path One licensed childcare provider that provides quality services to the families of surrounding areas in northwest Indiana. The hours of operation are six AM to six PM, Monday through Friday. There will be four employees and no more than thirty children. The town fire inspector has inspected the property. Petitioner is aware of the camera ordinance. Petitioner submits that the establishment of the proposed variance of use will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, moral, and general welfare, and will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other properties in the immediate vicinity for the purpose already permitted, nor substantially diminish or impair property values. And this is for this petitioner only, at this location only, and for this use only. The Board of Zoning Appeals had asked Ms. Snyder to update her, um... her picture of how the property is supposed to look. They had asked. There was two members who was not too happy about it. So she updated her site plan on the inside, and the fire inspector took a look at it. So that's why two, one voted, um, no, and then one voted abstain because of the site plan that she had submitted, but she updated it.
So this property is located just to the north of Shaver Motors?
Right. Shaver Motors used to have their offices there. Inside that, it's this house, inside the house, it's, it's remodeled to a office. But when they re-modaled their building, they moved their offices back over to that building, and then this building became vacant.
Is Michael Shaver the owner of the property?
Yes, I am.
So you are paying him rent?
Correct.
Anything else to add, Ms. Snyder?
Um, well, like, like she said, I am looking to expand. I'm currently working off a waitlist. I have families that I cannot serve because I don't have enough space in my home. So I'm just trying to be able to provide care to families that are in need.
Great. Good. Is there a motion from the council?
I'll make a motion to accept a childcare.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Uslak. Second by Ms. Chandler Felton.
I'm sorry, how many children did you say you're starting with?
So, I currently have nine. I didn't fill the rest of my spots because there's just not enough space in my home. So I have a, I have a wait.
What do they have to pay for this service?
It just depends. I'm government-funded, so a lot of them are subsidy.
Okay.
Mostly, all of them are subsidy.
Oh, that's great. Okay.
Any other questions or comments from the council?
How many employees? I don't know if I missed that. How many employees are you looking to have?
I'm looking to hire four.
Four? And that goes by your, you go by ages?
Yes, ma'am.
You're gonna be in on for their ages?
Okay.
And on this layout, you did, we get a fence? Is that what I, is that what you had to update it to?
Yeah, the fence is there, yes.
That's the White House on the corner?
That's the White House right on the corner, across the street from Shaver Motors.
Just want the babies to be safe, that's all.
I understand.
Of course. Anything else from the council? There ain't nothing else, Mr. January. Would you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. President. Vice President Neal.
Yes.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards.
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Uslak.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hardaway.
Aye.
President Bella.
Aye.
Seven in favor.
Thank you.
Seven in favor, congratulations. Good luck with your expansion.
Thank you.
Ms. Shine.
Our last petitioner for the evening is Alan Watkins. He is seeking special exception approval to allow a residential facility with amenities located at seventy-twenty Broadway. Petitioner is seeking a variance of use from section twenty-one dash one thirty-six to allow a residential facility with amenities on point nine-three-nine acres in a C-two community commercial zoning district. Petitioner wants to locate this business at seventy-twenty Broadway. Petitioner would like to use the subject property as a residential facility similar to a motel, providing a fully furnished common area while renting rooms, bedrooms, providing amenities, and allowing longer stays at an affordable cost. Petitioner assigns one resident as a house lead and a co-manager along with the petitioner. Petitioner states that the business will not change the nature of the community. Petitioner is a shared housing co-living provider, not a group home operator. Petitioner has two locations, up and running in Valparaiso and one in Portage. Petitioner submits that the establishment of the proposed variance of use will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, morals, and general welfare, and will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other properties in the immediate vicinity for the purpose already permitted, nor substantially diminish or impair property values. Petitioner is aware of the camera ordinance, and petitioner has met with the fire inspector and police chief regarding the proposed use. And this is for this petitioner only, and this location only, for this use only. And, Mr. President, I did contact Valparaiso, let's see, and Portage, and there were no, the building department, where they have variance, and they, they didn't have any record of any of that taking place there.
Mr. Watkins, did you go through the authorities in Portage of Valparaiso for your other two locations, sir?
No, I did not, because there was not a need to do so.
Okay. Are their ordinances different than the town of Maryville, or what? Why, why was there no need, sir?
Because seventy-twenty Broadway, which is the location we want to use, is currently zoned commercial. And we want to use it for residential purposes, although we consider that to be a commercial use, because we're operating basically like a motel, providing, you know, residential stays, but we provide more amenities and longer stays, minimum of three months.
Okay.
And sometimes a lot longer.
So are the, so are your properties in Valpo and Portage residential areas? Are they residential housing? That's why you did not go through?
I didn't need to do any variances.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, why is this before?
Attorney, attorney's sweating off, that's why he's going through this, this approval process. As, he, he says it's not a group home, he, he's just...
We don't allow extended stays, though, and he's talking about stays longer than thirty days, which we consider extended stays, correct?
Right, we don't allow it, but that's why he's going through this, so we can let him do it.
Well, not only is it a residential use in a commercial zone, but it's also extending the stays from our regular thirty-day or less to thirty-day or more.
How much more is it, about ninety days, or is it just, what does your extended stay look like?
We do three-month minimums. We do one-year leases.
We'll have every hotel in town coming to us for this exception, Sheila.
Leona, this is on your side of Broadway. Just south of, I just had to get the Google machine going. I couldn't picture this up.
Got to be a no.
What kind of rent rates do you charge, Mr. Watkins, for someone staying there?
Yeah, this is fully furnished, seven hundred a month, and it includes Wi-Fi, includes use of a washer and dryer, fully stocked kitchen, with all the cookware and utensils that they would need to cook their own food.
What's your approval process? How do you select your tenants? Is there a process at all?
Yeah, oh yeah, oh definitely. I interview them, I do a credit check, I do a background check, I verify their employment, and to make sure that they can afford it. I also, and I do a face-to-face interview, just to make sure that they're the type of individuals that can get along with other people in a shared living environment, and, and their cleanliness. So I kind of get a feel for that in, by doing a face-to-face interview with them as well.
Okay.
Does this seven hundred a month include their utilities, or is that separate? Do they have to put utilities in their own name?
It includes ninety percent, which we charge ten percent of the utility bill for each room.
And so this is basically like transitional living? So what happens if in ninety days, that person decides they want to say you renew their lease, or if they have not?
We do one-year leases, but we put a clause in the lease that states that if their life circumstances change, there were thirty days notice, they can break the lease without penalty.
So what if you get an unruly resident within that time period? What's your eviction process look like?
Well, they would be breaking the rules of the lease, and then I would, of course, address the issue with them directly. And if that doesn't resolve it, then I'd have to file for eviction.
Sheila, what are the neighboring, the neighboring businesses here, the residential homes, have we, do they know about this petitioner?
Yeah, they got, they had noticed, nobody...
Did we hear back from them at all?
No, nobody can.
And is the Central Floris, that's closed now, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Uh, did you say, is this open for male and female, or is it just?
Yes. The, the homes are co-ed, but the rooms are not. So the private, these are private bedroom rentals, fully furnished, for single adults. We do not allow overnight guests.
And these are just bedrooms that you're renting?
Correct. And they have access to all the shared, you know, the living room, kitchen, dining area, washer and dryer.
So have you had any issues with your other ones, as far as people not getting alone, people bothering other, getting into other people's things, or?
There's all, yeah. I mean, when you're dealing with people, there's always minor issues. And we, yes, we've had some minor issues, but nothing major. Nothing that police have ever needed to be called for.
What's your age range have, what has your age range looked like from Valpo and Portage? Are they eighteen and up, thirty and up, like?
My youngest right now is like twenty-two, and my oldest is seventy-two.
And the seventy-two-year-old is on a yearly lease? Is that what they're doing?
Yeah. And that, that's a woman who's full-time nurse as well.
Wow, at seventy-two, she's still...
Seventy-two. And she runs a craft business on the side.
Do you have a lot of traveling nurses?
I'm sorry, excuse me?
Traveling nurses. Do you have a lot of them renting to you?
No, not a lot, occasionally.
Because I know they travel the country.
Yeah, occasionally. I currently have, they're working people, divorcees, I have divorcees, widowers. And people who, I mean, I have one lady who, who got out of an abusive relationship situation, and she needed a place to stay that she could afford, and that she'd feel safe and secure. And so it's just a variety of different reasons why people would take advantage of such housing.
Um, I have another question. Do you have, you monitor the facility, the, you, do you monitor your, your home, your residential spaces, where you can see who's coming in and out of these places? Because it says that you don't allow overnight guests, and if there are people who are escaping abusive relationships, are these people deemed safe?
I have a house lead, a person I call a house lead, that's assigned to be the person in charge at the, at the, in the home itself, to, you know, keep an eye on things, make sure things are going as they should. If there's any issues, then she contacts me, and then, of course, I, I would get involved. One of the properties that I'm doing right now is the fifty-nine fifty-four Stone Avenue, is my personal residence as well. My wife and I live on the first floor, and I rent out bedrooms on the second floor. And so, so I'm very much, you know, involved in what's going on in these homes.
I have a question, or a couple situations. How long has your facilities in the other two areas been operate, operating?
So my personal residence, I've been doing it since twenty-one. And the one on Governor, we bought that in November last year.
And the Valpo and Portage?
Yeah. Now, there's a third one, seven oh seven Lidle, that's on the sheet there. That one, that's a home that I've owned since two thousand and eight. We moved out of there in two thousand and nineteen into the home, it's for Stone Avenue where I live now. And that's when I started doing this shared housing concept. If you were to Google shared housing slash co-living, you'd find that this is a trend that is becoming more and more popular near ma- major metropolitan areas, not only throughout our country, but throughout the world. And so, yeah, I've been, so that, that property on Lidle Street, that's where I, I got my feet wet with this concept. I rented out rooms there since two thousand and nineteen.[1792.86] And then I sold that property last year as a private bedroom rental, furnished bedroom rental. And that, and that gentleman is still operating that home, you know, today as such.
Which leads me to my second concern. And that being the trend of squatters and the problems that I've been seeing over in Illinois about how difficult it is to get the squatters out of homes that they shouldn't be in? How would you work with that?
Well, I don't have a problem, I don't have a problem with squatters, but any, I've been a real estate-
Or people when, when it comes down to evicting them, not leaving.
Okay.
Although you go through that process.
Yeah, well, I, I'll tell you that when I started on 707 Lidle, the first one, yes, I had some learning experiences to go through that first year or two. And I did. And, but I've been a real estate broker and landlord for over 30 years. So I've always been in real estate. And, you know, the eviction process, if you got somebody who won't leave, and I've had only one, in fact, that one that wouldn't leave, they did leave before they were evicted. And, and that wasn't because of not paying rent, because they weren't, they weren't, they weren't clean enough. After three warnings, the gentleman still was not, you know, taking care of his hygiene like he should be in a shared environment. And, and so I served him his notice and I filed the proper paperwork. And that was, this was on the Lidle Street property. And, and he moved out before he got evicted. So it's, it's the standard, you have to go through the standard eviction process in this situation as well.
Now, does your lead person reside there?
Yes, oh yes. I'm the lead person where I live, in my home, my personal residence, obviously. And then the nurse is the lead person on the Governor address.
How many bedrooms are in the Broadway location?
Currently, there is only two bedrooms in there. But this is a 28, 2,600 square foot home. And the second floor is wide open. And I gave you drawings in the packet there. So currently, there's two bedrooms on the first floor with a half bath. But there's space there for us to put four bedrooms on the second floor with two full baths. We're going to convert, the half bath is a large bath on the first floor and we're going to convert that to a full bath. And keep the two bedrooms on the first floor, add a third, and then there will be an open concept living room, dining and kitchen area.
So do you have an option then, Mr. Watkins, to purchase this property or have you already purchased it?
It's under contract to purchase, subject to the city approving our use.
Great. Anything else for the petitioner?
For the record, I'm probably not going to vote, but I just think this would be horrible.
Anything else, counsel?
What did you say, Mr. January? What did you just-
For the record, I believe this would be horrible.
Horrible?
Yes.
Why would you say that?
Just the transient type of lifestyle, things that Joe was mentioning. I think one of the, the biggest problems that we have in the town from the police department is going to hotels. This is going to be like a hotel. And just in terms of property values, we're going to attract people that probably have lower incomes and they may be transient, walking up and down the street, no telling what's going to go on. I just think Broadway is one of our prime corridors that we need to bring back to life. And this is not, I think, something that will help Broadway and the surrounding communities.
If I may respond to your-
Absolutely.
This is not transient people. These are people who are living their lives like everyone else, who need an affordable place to stay because of life circumstances, like I mentioned, divorce. You know, people get divorced, one person usually stays in that residence, the other one has to leave. Usually they can't afford a whole lot. Usually they're, they're restructuring. And I, and I got three or four divorcees right now. And they're working people, but they can't afford a whole lot, they're starting all over again. And I have one lady who's mentally disabled. She's high-functioning, she's in my personal residence, she's, she's been renting for me for, going on two and a half years now. And she just needed an affordable place to stay. And she's, she receives a social security disability. And, but in no way are these people transient. People are what you would consider undesirables. These are all working people, except for her. She's the only one I have that's not working because she's mentally disabled, but she's very high-functioning. And, you know, everybody else has jobs. I have, I've had some of, who've been, I have one guy who's been in my renting room for me for three years and he's a, he's an IT guy. You know, so, so I have to beg to differ that these are, these are, these are not undesirable people, they're quality people who are working, who are, who are just needing a place, sometimes temporarily, but I've not had any less than three months.
Well, this is a property in Maryville. You are renting it with the option to buy?
No, I have it under contract to purchase.
It's a contract purchase?
No, to purchase, to purchase.
Oh, okay.
It's a cash deal.
It's cash?
Yeah, and I have a partner also, it's not just me, I also have a financial partner.
And you are a real estate agent too?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you. Now, these pictures you have in the packet, these are the same pictures in the house in Maryville?
No, those pictures are of the one I have up and running right now at 730 Governor.
But you plan on making the house in Maryville like this?
Yes, Maryville needs work. We're, we're going to have to put about 50,000 or so into the property to, to remodel it, fix it up, to make it to what it needs to be, to provide a good, safe, clean environment.
Okay.
Mr. President, to, to Joe, and I, and I reread the staff report. Sheila cites in her staff report 21 dash, I believe it's 136, Joe, to allow residential facility. The first thing out of your mouth was our extended stay ordinance. That is not in the zoning, is it?
That is not in the zoning ordinance itself.
Uh huh.
That is in the body municipal code itself.
Right.
So.
So really, allowing him to have more than 30 days, there would need to be some other type of variance citation for the extended stay. I hear exactly what you're saying. I know both chiefs have gone through this, so's Bob Pillman. He just tried to shut down Clarion a week and a half ago because of the condition of that. And we're, we're allowing people to stay, we, we said this with Deluxe, Ed, when you guys went through there at Deluxe Inn, people were staying there longer than 30 days. They were enrolling their kids in Maryville schools, they were knocking out walls. Not that he's going to do it, but do we want to set a precedent and go against the ordinance we passed on a 30-day extended stay situation? That's the question.
Here's what I'll suggest for the counsel. Why don't we entertain a motion to defer? And then in the meantime, we can have Chief Newses do some investigative work on the home in Portage and Valpo. Let's get some background of what's going on there. Let's verify information that Mr. Watkins provided to us tonight. And let's learn a little bit more about these homes and how it works. It's new to us. It's just very new to us and we'll do some due diligence, more than we already have. Would that be agreeable to you right now, just be a couple of weeks or so?
Certainly.
So the chair, entertain a motion to defer.
I'm motion to defer.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Hardaway to defer, second by Mrs. Uselek. Ms. Schein, can we do that? Is that okay to defer this?
Oh, sure.
Okay. Any other questions or comments now on the motion to defer? Hearing now, Mr. January, call the roll, please.
Vice President Neal.
Yes.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards.
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Uselek.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hardaway.
Yes.
President Bella.
Aye.
Seven in favor.
That was beautifully called, thank you. We'll be back in touch.
Thank you.
We have no old business before tonight, is there any new business?
Mr. President, I have one item under old business, because I received an email from one of my constituents, or a text message. Chief, can you give us an update on the bulletproof vest for Tiffany, please?
Sure, we use point-blank body armor ballistics and our rep is in charge of Indiana, Ohio, and Kentucky. So we have had an actual, before this was, before we even talked about this, we have an actual issue with the design of the new vest, so we've been trying to get the, the actual representative up here. As soon as they get up here, they can measure not only Tiffany, but also Barbara for her vest as well.
Thank you.
Anything else? Open to the public, public comment, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record and we allow three minutes.
Good evening, Shonda Flowers, 6137 Connecticut Street in Maryville. Of course, I'm picking back on the court. One of the things that have been happening recently with the council meeting is the, the topics of conversations of new ordinances. And here's my take, from a personal perspective and a professional. Our ordinances are only as good as they are if we're not enforcing them, they're not going to work. And when I look at numbers, I will agree that the court has lost money. But where I kind of divvy a little from is that the court's failures and successes is not just contingent upon the court. How cases are coming through our court has a lot to do with, I like to call them, business partners, meaning the people who write the tickets. You have code enforcement, you have the officers, you have the fire department or their inspector. Tickets can come from stormwater, tickets can come from various departments that have the authority to write those tickets. When you look at the numbers with regards to, and the reason that I think that the numbers are important and what I'm hoping from the council is that, especially now that there is a new council, that we can have an opportunity to sit down and get, have conversations about the court and what the potential of the court can be. And that those conversations also include Mike Brown's attorneys that represent, have intervened on our lawsuit, just so you can hear things from a different perspective because they're not for the court, they're not against the court. But interesting enough, when we met with the council people that wanted to meet with us, they found it quite, quite interesting in the statistics and numbers that they share with regards to the past when closing Hammond. And I think that that would be interesting, especially for the new council people. I just like to reflect on numbers. So when you talk about the court and having revenue generated, one of the things that I can't help but to look at are the numbers in which tickets were written. In 2011, there were over 11,000 tickets. In 2023, there were only 2,770 tickets. And so when you look at that, of that amount, only 13,000 of those tickets were ordinances. Now, interesting enough, I think somewhere along this conversation, there was something mentioned about false alarm tickets. Just to give you some numbers with regards to revenue that was generated through false alarms, which we have not seen any false alarm tickets in the last few years. For instance, false alarms at one point, and this is in 2014, generated over $26,000 to the town. False alarms in 2013, there were over 17,000. This is just for that one ticket of false alarms. When you talk about false alarms in 2015, there was monies that was generated that also were $21,000. When you keep going and you look at the years, there is a direct correlation to the amount of tickets that were written and monies generated. In council meetings, we've heard from your residents, which includes myself, about people speeding in the areas in which they live. Those are ordinances because those are streets, for the most part, that belong to the town. There has not been any moving violation tickets that have come through our court within the past few years. So when you talk about monies that have been used in the past for continuing education, additional equipment, there's a partnership that goes along with that. So the success and the failure or, and/or the failure of the court is not just limited to the court. And then I would hope that when having conversations about the court, that you improve, include all of those entities and see what we all can do, what has happened in the past, even with the ordinances that have been outdated with regards to how monies are distributed. That has been one of the main factors since 2019 with regards to the, the court going from court view over to Odyssey with the state system and what they will not allow because of our ordinances being outdated. I really believe that with the fact that Judge, Judge Velasco is in office for the next few years, that there are other things that you do have to look at when it comes to outsourcing those ordinances and paying a different staff to have to do the work that you need in order to, as you would say, generate revenue. If you already have the judge who's going to be here, you speak of one. Now, I don't know if that one person that is there, if that includes monies being exchanged through the court, but from a state board of accounts perspective, one person is not going to be enough. And the reason is because of theft that happened in the past, there are checks and balances systems that are in place. For instance, I am on the account for the town. I cannot handle the money. When the person comes in to pay, those clerks are paid. Once the clerks are paid, there's someone else that has to sign off on what they've counted. And then the person who deposited is different. One person is not going to be able to do that. Hence, when we did close for that timeframe, that box out at front that was put out there in an effort to take those payments were full because the one person who at the time was Amy was not able to, to cash or deposit those checks just because of checks and balances system that was put in place after the theft. So I hope that in introducing or having those conversations, more importantly, with the new council people, that they get all facets of exactly what's going on, how it works and how monies actually get funded through the court and come out that ultimately looks like revenue. That would be my only suggestion. And I do have extra reports for those that did not get one, that didn't want one, that if you would like to see what those numbers, and also to answer the question, the numbers in which you were using were simply based off of monies that came into the, into the town, which we understand, but we have no control of money being dispersed to counties and money being dispersed out to the state. So when you look at the whole pages, the whole picture with regards to revenue generated, it makes a significant difference in what those numbers are. And I have all of those numbers, that is inclusive of the town as well as the state and county, so you can see just what our little court generated in monies that was dispersed amongst all of those pieces. Thank you.
Ryan Mesarch, 201 East 68th Place, Councilwoman Haynes Edwards, I'd like to offer you my condolences in your loss. I feel you right here. Yesterday, I had the opportunity to see Tiffany Thomas, code enforcement officer in my neighborhood. Made me very happy. She could probably live her life in my neighborhood and make a career out of that. I would like to see her get measured up for her vest and Barbara as well, as quickly as possible. I appreciate the, the update on that. I have been enjoying the bike trail quite a bit over the past three, four weeks. I have a growing concern because there's only been one time I've been on a bike trail where someone has not been using pot. There are people who are on that trail with four-wheeler ATVs. I don't understand why our bike trail has to be a place where young adults use drugs and ride ATVs. It's also, the bike trails are also not getting mowed and some garbage cans along the way would be fantastic. As far as having this home on Broadway, I live two blocks away. My good neighbor Joe here, when that was read, we were both shaking our head, no, neighbors don't want this. Maryville can live without this, we don't need it. And sure, housing people would be fantastic, but we don't want it. Finally, I'd like to support the town court, we need to have it. Maryville's population is actually greater than 52 of the 92 counties in Indiana, that's 50%. Maryville is, has a larger population than 57% of the counties in Indiana. Yes, we need the court. You can't put a price tag on justice and freedom and there are so many things that that provide, the, the truancy court, the state educators come to Maryville because this program is so successful, they want to know what's going on, like what are you guys doing? Because we want to copy this in other places. And our, our town wants to, our town has shipped $25 million happily to Munster for a train station that will not benefit us whatsoever. We have the warehouses out there who get tax abatements where I have brought up the point that no one can answer, how much money do they- point that no one can answer, how much money do they keep in their pockets versus money that they would be paying us in taxes? Money that would go for more officers, more code enforcement officers, more equipment. It's sad, because the town wants this service, the people want the service. We need to keep it open. The Crown Point Court systems that, that handle minor cases, there's three judges, basically one judge and two assisting, and their backlog is approximately nine-plus months. If you were to get a ticket today, you probably wouldn't even be in court until December. That's how backlog they are.
Finish up, Ryan, please.
We need to keep the court open. It's a beautiful service to the town.
Chris Hulse at eight hundred West Seventy-third Avenue. I've been a resident for almost twenty-seven years in the town of Maryville, love it, pirate fan to the, to the, I've sat here tonight and been totally disgusted of what I've heard. You guys spend money, you find, when it's something that you guys want, you make sure you have the people properly up here with their figures in line. When residents come to you for beautification or a historical sign that was given to our, specifically Turkey Creek, we have to fight tooth and nails to find money so that we can, our residents, like, I walk resident to residence, and we want the sign back. They may not be here, but they do talk to us. I don't see no improvement on that. Getting rid of the courts? No. If you gave me a badge, I could sit on my front porch, I could write tickets all day for you for the people that speed up and down Seventy-third Avenue. And as far as code enforcement, put a vest on me. My neighborhood doesn't cut her grass, has six dogs, but you're only allowed three. I could write tickets all day for you to give money for revenue for the, for the courts. And I, forty-nine thousand dollars for a sign in front of the street department, all this money, but yet, when it comes to the, what's important, I'm a Maryville, I am Maryville grads. There are a lot of people that don't go to school that needs to get in trouble for. Been on the bike trail. Yeah, it's pretty disgusting when you're driving your bike and people are, are just smoking pot and riding ATVs. You don't know if you're going to get mugged on the...
Bike trail.
On the, on the bike trail. And as far as that home goes, sorry, guys. I grew up with family that were in halfway houses. You don't want that stuff, especially around Maryville. We got enough problems. And you want to worry about people living in those, they're going to have dog problems too, dumping their dogs too, and they don't want them. Thank you for listening to me, but in the town of Maryville, we need to do better for our residents. And you can't speak for all of us when some of them don't even know what your passion. I didn't learn until I started coming as a resident to these meetings because it's something that I care about now. Thank you.
Hello, good evening, counsel. My name is Malcolm Adams, sixty-three thirty-one Cleveland Street in Maryville. I've been a resident for almost fifteen years. I have a business on fifty-six ninety Harrison Street in M.L.A. Preney. First, I would like to say, Councilwoman Edwards, condolences to your husband.
Thank you.
The rest of the council, I was just wondering, I need some help on my neighbor in the back of my business. I have tried to beautify my business. Every year I have been there, I have cut the trees, I have cut the grass, I have even cut his trees. I had knocked on his door to ask him, can I trim his bushes to make them look a little better? He told me to get off his property. So I was wondering, what do I do? Because his, his property is making my property look bad. People are walking past, throwing bottles, chips, they just litter all over the place, and I get out there every morning with a trash can and try to pick up the trash to keep the corner of fifty-seventh and Harrison nice. So I'm just asking from the council, what do I do? What steps do I take to keep that corner beautified and to welcome residents liking the area?
I'd be happy to speak with you after the council meeting has adjourned. I'll get information on who that is.
Okay.
And we can get our wonderful Tiffany and ourselves to see what's going on over there.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? So announcement tonight, next council meeting is Tuesday, May twenty-eighth at six thirty. Redevelopment Commission meeting is Tuesday, May twenty-eighth at six fifteen. Mrs. Neal already mentioned the Juneteenth family movie night, June eighteenth at six thirty, at the Dean and Barbara White Community Center. The fireworks show is July third at Maryville High School parking lots at Sundown. And our parade this year on July fourth will be at eleven o'clock, starting at the community center and traveling south to Eightieth Place. And the job fair, you can see job fair stickers here, is on July twenty-fourth from eleven thirty to two thirty at the Dean and Barbara White Community Center. Chair, entertain a motion adjourned?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.